Hold the meeting to order.
Sure, just bear with me as I try to see who's on my screen versus who's not on the commission. Uh, Mr. Witherspoon.
Michael, you're muted.
Here.
Mr. Rowena. Also muted. I think he said here. We'll go with that.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Goldstein?
Also muted.
Yeah, Mr. Cantor?
Yeah.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Shulman?
Here.
I think I got everybody.
All right, um, well, welcome, uh, to everybody and, um, let's, uh, uh, begin, uh, the meeting with, um, wishing everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day. Also want to, uh, um, mention, I'm not looking to embarrass anyone, but just mention that, um, Michael, uh, has been elected to the Board of Norwalk Hospital. Uh, great honor for him and, um, uh, a nice reflection on us as well. Um, all right, I, I, uh, the, the first item is going to be our public hearing. I would ask that any of you that are not here for, uh, the public hearing, uh, turn your video off, uh, so that we just, uh, see the people who are, um, uh, going to be making the, uh, initial presentation. Um, we'll ask you to put your video back on when, um, uh, the, uh, item, uh, relates to you. Uh, with regard to, uh, public hearings, uh, the way, uh, we conduct them, um, as, uh, required, uh, by, uh, regulation, is that, um, the, uh, developer or the developers representative, uh, will make a, uh, presentation, um, regarding their project. Um, anytime during the presentation, uh, commission members are welcome to ask, uh, questions regarding, uh, the, uh, development. Um, when, uh, that, um, presentation is completed, we will invite, uh, the public, uh, to, uh, make their comments for, against, uh, the, uh, project. Uh, keep in mind, uh, if you, uh, intend to speak, that, uh, you only have, the public only has one, uh, opportunity per person to speak on the matter, so we encourage you, uh, to, uh, perhaps make some notes and, uh, make sure you have an opportunity or give yourself, uh, the opportunity to say everything that, um, uh, you wish to say, uh, because we don't call on people a second time. Um, and, uh, you know, as long as you're on topic, um, and not wandering around, uh, we typically do not, uh, limit, uh, the amount of time you have, uh, to, to make that, uh, presentation. Uh, once the public has had an opportunity to, um, speak, uh, again, the owner or developer will have, uh, an opportunity, uh, to respond to questions, to rebut, uh, comments. Uh, and it, um, and again, uh, the commission members will have an opportunity to ask any, any questions, uh, they wish. Um, and, uh, then, um, the, um, uh, commission, um, may decide to take action uh, on the matter this evening or, uh, uh, defer action. Um, I'd ask that, um, keep, uh, keep your, your comments, uh, wholesome as if family members were, uh, listening. Um, should you get out of control, and this is a very infrequent occurrence, um, uh, we will, uh, cut you off, um, and, uh, your opportunity to speak further, um, will, will end. Um, and I think basically, uh, that's it. Um, with that, uh, I'll call on the, uh, representative for two oh two one dash oh four, R slash S P slash cam, three East Wall Street Associates, um, to, um, as it were, come to the microphone and, uh, begin the presentation.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a principal and senior engineer with Redness and Mead, a land use consulting company with offices in Stanford and Wilton. Uh, for the applicant, uh, we provided the land surveying, civil engineering and the zoning consulting and permitting services on the project. Uh, as you noted, uh, I am here representing, um, uh, three East Wall Street Associates. And three East Wall Street Associates principals are Anthony Gaglio Senior and Anthony Gaglio Junior of Viking Construction. Um, I have a lot of experience both in construction, but also in particular with the restoration of, uh, historic structures. Um, and although we did a, uh, initial presentation to you a couple of months ago after we filed in January, um, this being the, the public hearing and, uh, uh, let's see, are you now seeing?
Yes, yes, we can see, we can see your screen.
Okay. This is, this is the, uh, the team, uh, showing on your screen now. Uh, anyway, so I'll make a, a rather fulsome presentation because this is the public hearing. We want to get through all the details. You'll hear from a number of the professionals on the team. Uh, you'll hear from the project architect, Ken Borisin. Uh, you'll hear from, uh, me on the site planning. Uh, uh, my colleague is also on the call, Vincent Hines, to a lot of the engineering. You'll hear from, uh, Todd Bryant of Heritage Resources, our project historical consultant. Uh, and you will hear from, um, Emily Foster of SLR Consulting, uh, our traffic engineer. Um, also on the call, if we need him, is Matt Pop of Environmental Land Solutions, our landscape architect, um, and Jay Klein, uh, the project attorney. Um, uh, you see the project here, we're, that we're here to talk about tonight, which is three East Wall Street in the upper left. This is kind of our before and after picture. Um, I should also note that, uh, mailing was sent, certified mail return receipt requested on, uh, March 5th, and evidence of that mailing was provided to staff and is now in your files. Um, and, uh, this public hearing was noticed in the hour on March 3rd and March 10th in accordance with, uh, notice criteria. The first thing I'm going to show you is, um, actually not three East Wall Street. Um, it's a project we were here for a couple of years ago that received approval, um, that gives us our model of what we're trying to do here at three East Wall Street. Um, and, and taken really from the first few sentences of the application narrative submitted, uh, back in January. Uh, the, the way to describe the whole purpose of this application is, is this unique historic architecture contributes positively to community and village character. Um, but the age and construction of these structures make them particularly vulnerable to degradation caused by use and the passage of time. As such, significant investments are needed simply to maintain these properties, uh, and more is needed to revive them to their past luster. Uh, the property of three Elm Crest Terrace provides a model for how to rehabilitate structures with unique historic character and allow for sympathetic context sensitive infill development. And that infill development is what provides the investment resources needed to spur the rehabilitation of these buildings. Um, so this is, uh, three Elm Crest Terrace, uh, which the Gaglios purchased, uh, a couple of years ago. This is what it looked like when they purchased it. Uh, we came in, uh, before, uh, the city and zoning and planning and, uh, sort of commission uh, with an idea to add a historic incentive preservation, uh, use, uh, to the de-residence zone in the case of three Elm Crest Terrace. Uh, the city and the zoning commission approved this amendment, uh, which enabled, uh, the, um, infill development behind this and the restoration of, uh, three Elm Crest Terrace. This, this, uh, incentive standard for historic, uh, renovations is something that's not only in, uh, your de-residence regulations, it also exists in two other places within your, uh, Sono, um, station design district and your central business district, uh, where you, uh, allow, uh, incentive standards, uh, for the preservation of historic structures of merit. So, uh, after you granted that approval, uh, the Gaglios went to work and completed the project as drawn. And this is what three Elm Crest Terrace looks like today. This is not a rendering. This is a photo. Um, so this is, uh, exactly what we're trying to do here at three East Wall Street. This is just a, uh, an orientation aerial to bring us into focus as to where we are. You see the Norwalk River and the Norwalk, the head of Norwalk Harbor. In fact, head of, head of harbor is right here. Uh, three East Wall Street, let me get a, three East Wall, or East Wall Street is kind of cutting through the center of the aerial here. Got East Ave, of course, on the right, Norwalk Green. You can see the Historical Society over here. First Congregational Church wraps around us. Uh, we're this site right here where that red arrow is. So zooming in a little closer, uh, a little more detail, again, red arrow pointing to our site. Norwalk Congregational, uh, First Congregational Church around us, Raymond Funeral Home to our right. Historical Society across the street. Um, this is the manor house, uh, and this is a former stable in the back. This is the existing condition of the site. So, because, um, so much is related to the historic, uh, uh, preservation standard, we of course hired, um, a consultant to help us, um, understand the history of the manor house and the property um, and consult with us on, um, how, uh, the design uh, and the restoration, uh, should occur, working with our architect. I'm going to have, um, Todd Bryant now go through that, um, research that he conducted and what his findings were. Hopefully he's somewhere.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you can go to the next slide.
Sure.
So, uh, this house was built about eighteen seventy by H T Morgan, who had, uh, was a New York City, uh, financial guy and he, he, uh, you know, Fairfield County is no stranger to them certainly. And, uh, he married Frederick St. John Lockwood's sister, Elizabeth. Uh, and this was their home. Uh, can I go to the next slide, please? In eighteen eighty, Elizabeth passed away and, uh, H T Morgan went, moved back to New York City. And the house, uh, passed in some, I don't know if it was a sale or how it, how it happened, but the house went back to Frederick St. John Lockwood. And he made some changes. He added the port cochere on the right and he added that kind of drum-like, uh, addition on the second floor. Uh, and, uh, and that was added for his son George, who was disabled in a wheelchair. And he wanted to give George, uh, a place that he could, uh, really look out on all of Norwalk so that he wouldn't be, you know, kind of stuck away in a, in a room with two windows. So it was a very humane thing to do. And you can also see in this picture that it wasn't always the, uh, the white with, uh, you know, green details that we see today. That kind of came in with the colonial revival and these houses were built long before that was, uh, popular. And you can see that, you know, uh, at least two different colors, possibly three. You can see also on the, on the roof of the addition, you can see, uh, a balustrade that, uh, that, uh, mimics the balustrade around the porch. And you can't really see the cresting in this picture, but it's, uh, on the very top of the mansard roof, there's iron cresting which still exists. The, uh, the, the, uh, the balustrade on the, on the, uh, second floor addition is, is gone, but will be replaced. And in terms, also, that's another closer photograph. And in, in terms of the color, uh, I believe that, uh, uh, the, uh, Gaglios have, uh, have gotten a proposal, uh, to, uh, from a, a firm that's worked in the city before to do what they call paint archaeology and discover what these original colors actually were.
We've got a proposal from Jablonsky. They're gonna,
Jablonsky, right.
They'll take sixteen core samples of the original woodwork and under a high-powered microscope analyze what the original colors were. So we can try to get as close to that from that period of time.
Yeah, and that, and they've worked, uh, with, uh, they've worked at Lockwood Matthews, they've worked with the Historical Commission, uh, and various other places in Norwalk. So they, they know what they're doing and they have a national reputation. So this is the picture I have behind me. This is the nineteen oh one, uh, uh, taken during the nineteen oh one, uh, uh, anniversary, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the city of Norwalk, which was a huge deal. It lasted a week. There were parades and dinners and speeches. And there's a book by, uh, the Reverend, one of the Reverend Selix, uh, that's available online that will, you know, give you great detail about, well, what all that was, and that's what all this bunting is about. Um, and, uh, down here in the front, you can see George in his wheelchair. Um, so, uh, it's, uh, this is what it looked like in nineteen one. Uh, it's pretty much what it looks like today with the positive, with the exception of the shutters.
And the cresting.
Yeah, and the cresting, you can, well, you, can you see the cresting in this one?
Yeah, well, not really. Over top of it, you can see it on the side here.
Yeah, you can see it over there a little bit. Yeah, there you go. You can see it there because it's being hidden by the bunting, but you can see it and that still exists. These photographs, by the way, are courtesy of the Norwalk Public Library History Room and they've been very, very helpful. Uh, and then we have the, uh, the, uh, carriage house in the back. Now, the carriage house, uh, was once a lovely, uh, piece of architecture that sort of matched the house. But it was, it had become, this is what it looks like today, and it, it had become so disfigured that in nineteen eighty-five, when the, uh, Norwalk Green Historic District was written, they did not even consider this. They didn't make it, 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 in historic districts, there are two classes of buildings, contributing, which means that they still have enough architectural integrity to be, uh, considered historic assets and non-contributing, which means that they don't. This did, wasn't even mentioned. It was not even, it wasn't not contributing, was a non-contributing. They didn't even mention it. And, uh, despite the fact that there were, there were, I believe, eight other, uh, garages and carriage houses that were considered in that district. So, the, uh, the consultant who wrote that nomination didn't even consider this worthy of a mention. And, um, these are some of the, you know, bef- bef- before Jablonsky was on board, we were thinking that, uh, we would, we would, you know, come up with a contemporary, uh, color scheme for the house. And these books are sources, they're the best sources, uh, for, uh, colors of those houses a- at that time. And in fact, the first one, the Victorian, uh, authentic colored themes for Victorian houses were written by two architects, Rossiter and Wright in eighteen eighty, so that was contemporary. Um, and, uh, the other three are later, though the second one is from, uh, uh, from, uh, from eighteen ninety-five. Uh, it was eighteen eighty-five to eighteen ninety-four from, uh, Scientific American, uh, Architecture Editions, and then the other two are contemporary. So, but with all of these, with, with these sources and with Jablonsky's report, the colors on this house will be very authentic. They will not be what you're, what we've been seeing, these white houses that we've been seeing for so long, but though it'll come much more, it, it'll be much more like the way the Lockwoods and, uh, saw it in the eighteen eighties.
Thank you, Todd. Um, so, uh, we'll get to our architect shortly, uh, to, to review, uh, the restoration and the, and the proposed, uh, the proposed building behind. Um, but here, here again is an existing photo of what it looks like today. I should first say, basically, everything outside the home in terms of landscaping and trees uh, that you see in this photo, uh, will remain, uh, and then some landscaping will be added for our landscape plan. Um, but everything you see on the outside of this, uh, existing manor house effectively needs to be entirely rehabbed or replaced, um, from that, uh, cresting, which has to come down and be sandblasted and repainted to the roof, to the windows, to the siding, to the trim, um, to the balustrades, the, the trim on the, on the porch. Um, it, it basically all needs to be, uh, replaced. To give you an idea of the extent, I've just got three photos of the work, uh, that's going to go into this home. Um, I mean, these pieces are, uh, you know, hundred and, hundred and forty years old and a hundred and fifty years old now and, and, uh, held, held together by the paint. But on the left, again, you see that balustrade, uh, that, that cresting, rather. Uh, you see a slate roof, uh, we've, uh, the Gaglios are looking to, um, source slate, uh, very similar in tone, uh, to match, uh, what's there, to replace it. Uh, you see the, the balustrade on the porch, which, um, not each piece is the same, so they have to be molded individually, uh, to be replaced, uh, to match the shape and the styling. Same with some of this dental work under the eve line. Um, you know, basically, everybody, everything is going to be recreated to match, uh, the styling that is there, uh, perhaps with more contemporary materials that'll last, uh, a lot longer than wooden paint. Um, but I'll have, uh, uh, Ken talk to you about, um, uh, our hope for what this will look like when we're done.
Great, thanks, Greg. Uh, people here, can people hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, great. So, uh, again, the, uh, the primary, uh, let's start with the restoration again. I'm just gonna kind of paraphrase what, what Craig said. Uh, all the siding and trim will be removed and replaced with similar shapes and details using modern materials such as cementitious, uh, siding, uh, corners brackets will be removed and repaired or repl- replicated. Uh, large quantities of materials required where standard shapes are not readily available, molds will be made. Uh, the windows, the existing single pane windows will be replaced with new energy efficient double pane windows, uh, that match the historic, uh, period in terms of the trim, uh, as much as possible and mullions. Uh, the slate roof will be removed and evaluated for reuse. Uh, if it, if it can be reused, it will. If not, uh, new slate will be, um, purchased and, and installed. Yankee gutters, uh, existing copper flashings will be replaced, Yankee gutters will be completely replaced and, uh, and re-lined, uh, existing, uh, cresting will be restored to its original, uh, uh, shape and, uh, sizes. Uh, the front porch, which is one of the most significant historic details of the manor house, uh, uh, is one of the most historic is that, is the railings, as Craig mentioned. Uh, this happens to be the most expensive and, and technically challenged facet of the restoration. That complete system will be disassembled. Each piece will be evaluated for longevity. Um, and, uh, each piece will be rep- pre-painted and reassembled or, or new moldings will be made. The porch columns will be removed and repaired, replaced with matching modern materials. Ornate details of the vestibule and the entry doors will be chemically stripped, repaired, primed and repainted. Uh, the utmost care will be taken with these hundred and fifty-year-old components. Porch decking will be sand and refurbished in place. Historic lattice at the base of the porch will be replaced with modern materials. Stone foundation will be repointed to assure, assure their longevity. Uh, in our extensive research with, uh, historic consultant Todd Bryant, uh, we, we discovered that there weren't any railing systems, as he mentioned, have been removed from the second floor octagon. So that's going to be, uh, again, uh, matched to the, uh, lower level, uh, balustrade and installed and, and the roofing, the new roofing on the octagon, we'll have coordinated with that. Uh, and then we talked about the paint colors, Todd, Todd mentioned that. So the paint colors that you see here are an estimate of what we kind of thought they might be, but there will be, uh, actual paint colors once the study is done. Uh, next, next slide. Um, the idea that this, you, the, the, the building in the back was a compliment to, uh, and, 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 and really hidden in this case from the street. So this is a picture from the driveway. It was actually a picture and then we modeled the building in, uh, in a computer rendering that shows how little you see of this, uh, addition in the back fifteen, uh, unit building. Um, even if you remove the tree, you can see that the building is complimentary. Um, we evaluated the condition of existing carriage house. Again, Todd Bryant mentioned that it wasn't even, uh, had any kind of historic, uh, uh, importance to it and its loss would not harm the integrity of the district, uh, given that it was in incredibly poor condition. Uh, we removed it to, in order to, uh, install the, uh, the new fifteen unit building. That building is designed to be complimentary uh, to the manor house, the tip it's hat to the manor house. Uh, it uses a gap, a, uh, a hip, uh, gamble sort of, uh, mansard form, uh, to soften the scale of the third floor. Uh, and it creates a dialogue with the original house. Cues are derived from the manor house, uh, such as, but not limited to the slope of that mansared portion right there is the same slope. Uh, and then there is, uh, uh, and then in terms of the roof, dormers. We lost, we lost yours. Uh, no, it's just me, sorry. Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, the dormers are kind of picking up the dormers of the original house. Uh, we did not replicate the cresting because we felt that's important for the major maiden house to have. Um, and, um, there, there's a roof deck behind that shallower sloped, uh, hip portion, uh, for the residents to use, but it all, and it also hides any kind of mechanical condensers that might be on the roof. Uh, cementitious siding is used, uh, and the trim materials will be used, uh, for the exterior wall, energy efficient windows that are similar in style to the windows that be replacing the, uh, existing windows in the original house will be used. Uh, the roofing is asphalt shingles with a complimentary color to the slate roof, the bay windows, uh, punctuate and give relief to the building's longer facade. Uh, and a lattice planter, uh, at the center of the, of this elevation hides the cars from view. Uh, care was made, taken to make sure the structure was complimentary again and deferred to the original structure. So, for instance, the paint colors here are more muted, uh, to allow the front building to, uh, kind of stand as the more grand dom, if you will, of, of this, of the, uh, of, of the, uh, site. If you could go to the next slide. Uh, so this is the, uh, first floor site plan, essentially with a parking underneath the building. Uh, and, um, there's a lobby and elevator at the far backside, uh, that gets you to all the floors and to the roof and, uh, some, uh, mechanical space on the left side and storage, uh, and a second stair out. And we moved this building further away from the manor house based on some comments, so it's now about a hundred and fifty percent further than it was, about five feet, as opposed to, I think it was three and a half before. If you look at the lower, um, elevation drawing, if you blow that up, Craig, a little bit, um, you can just see what we're talking about, how the, the building relates to it, but does not, um, it, it does not, uh, compete with it. Uh, it, it was much more expensive to do this mansard type roof, uh, and dormers than it would be to just do a three-story flat roof building, but then it would have competed with, in our, in our opinion, in this case, uh, the existing house. So if you move to the next slide, uh, these are the floor plans. Uh, on the second floor plan, you have, uh, seven units. There are, uh, seven of those units are all, uh, one bedroom plus den units, and there's a small gym. Yeah, there, those units are around, uh, it's square footage there.
Nine sixty-four for this one.
Nine sixty-four, yeah, there. And then there's a, a gym that's about, uh, again, I can't see that, six hundred, six sixty. And then on this upper floor, uh, there are eight units, so there's a unit above the gym and that's the only one bedroom unit. Again, all the other units are one bedroom plus den. If you go to the next floor, that's the roof. And so there's a roof deck. Obviously, it'll be furniture and things like that up there, but you come up to lobby and there's a roof deck there. Uh, and condensing, uh, you, area for some mechanical at the rear. And condensing area for some mechanical at the rear. Again, it won't be seen because the roof comes up higher than the flat roof below it, behind it, yeah. Next slide. And those are all the elevations as requested, you know, to be submitted to zoning. You saw the top one was the color elevations and these are the other sides. Next slide. And these are the elevations of the manor house. It was asked to make sure that we included showing where the fire escapes were, so we added that. In conclusion, the combination of the restoration of the manor house along with its complimentary fifteen unit building. At the rear of the site creates a viable development that will strengthen this portion of East Wall Street. The addition of the proposed fifteen unit building allows for much greater attention. And finances to detail the restoration of the manor house. And preserves the historic manor house gem to remain for years to come.
Quick question. In the peer review, and I don't know if we're going to get to that later, you can just tell me to be quiet until then. One of the comments were around the size of the garage doors or the bays. What, I just was curious, what is your response to that?
Sure, yeah. So we looked at that and it looked very odd actually shortening that because of the way the building works. So we were prepared. It's not shown in this drawing, but to plant, you know, put a, put a arborvitae or something in front of that to hide that or do some planting on the, so it would be on the. On the other, on the left side of that piece, Craig. No, on the right side, sorry, you're moving all over. On the right, on the right side of the left opening. Right, that would be, that would be planted and on the, on the left side of the right.
The right opening.
That would be planted, yeah.
Okay.
The box planters that you see in front with the lattice, we are building those. So that's, that's a dramatic lattice piece that covers as opposed to chain link fence, which looks terrible. We're going to build, we're just going to add them on either side, so proportionally scaled.
Oh, it's nice. And then one other question on slide seventeen. I think there was a photo, that had the photo of the tree in place. That tree, I'm guessing is a tree in the long term future, what you'd hope the tree, or is that, that's the real tree that'll be there?
Today and will be protected during construction.
That tree stays.
Awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, we should.
I just want to say one other thing. We took a photograph of the situation where it would be the most visible. This was, we actually walked along the street. And we went across the street to the historic up on the hill and we took a photograph where it was kind of the worst. Visible. And this was it. Because as you go to the right, the tree totally hides it. And as you move to the left, the building disappears.
We also asked with Todd Bryant's help, we went across the street to the historical society to. See what their view would be also. And they're basically in the same line and Todd can speak to that.
So you should also note.
We went to the, to the area between the townhouse and the burying ground, which is where they often have events. So I'm thinking that that was in terms of visibility from the, from Mill Hill, that that would be the place where people would see it most. And this is, this is essentially the view. I mean, you don't really, you don't see any more of this building than you did of the existing character.
And for the record, it is important to note that we have been to the Norwalk Historical Commission. And they reviewed favorably both the text amendment and the site plan special permit, including. Our restoration efforts and the new architecture of the building in the rear. Cover that document a little bit. We, and as you noted, you had your own. Consultant reviewer, B F J Planning, providing planning and architectural review. We received those comments, we replied to each and every one. That document is on your record. So there's, there's other architectural eyes on this. As well as the careful eyes of Todd and Ken. At the end of the day, basically, we're going from sixteen units on site today. To twenty six units on site. At the end of the day, this is really a project about adding ten units. Now, we demolished five of them, four in the carriage house, one in the manor house. And we're building fifteen, but ultimately the delta is plus ten units here. Want to talk about the site plan just a little bit. And I also want to. Yeah, so this is the site plan. The driveway is maintained in the front, just as it is today. The walks will actually be converted to a paver unit. All the new walks will be paver instead of asphalt or concrete. These trees here on the right side of the driveway will be preserved. And the way the circulation works is in, in. To the side on the outside, under the garage and out from the. From the garage and kind of a one way loop in the back. We meet the side yard setbacks. We actually moved the building back a hair. In response to B F J's comments that your consultant reviewer. So we're at a nineteen and a half foot setback. That's part of our. Incentive request. We've got one point three parking spaces, which is what is required by our zoning regulations. We're not asking for a waiver. From the parking standards. We've got a white fence around the entire property. A vinyl fence that's indicated on the landscape plans as being five to six feet tall. To help provide privacy and screening to our neighbors. As far as drainage goes, we have an opportunity to completely rehaul the stormwater management system on site. So everything from the addition will be collected, everything from the parking areas around the addition will be collected. By three new area drains. It'll go through an oil grid separator. It'll go to an underground infiltration system. And in significant events may overflow to the street. This has been reviewed. By the Department of Public Works. They've signed off on the site plan driveway, the stormwater management system. We went to the Harbor Management Commission. And they found the text amendment to be consistent with the harbor management plan. And they particularly liked the fact that we were introducing. A impervious coverage standard for the zone. Right now, the East Village District, East Avenue Village District does not. Have an impervious coverage limit. Theoretically, you could have up to a hundred percent of hardscape. We're introducing when you use this incentive regulation that that will be capped at seventy percent. So thirty percent of the site would remain. Green and they particularly like that standard and that's why they felt comfortable endorsing the text amendment application. The D E E P also found the application to be. And that's the Department of Environmental, the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for the state also found it to be. Consistent with the Coastal Area Management Act, that their Department of Land and Water Resources was provided a referral and those comments came back. As it stands right now, there's, I think, twenty three mature trees on site. And the current site plan saves fourteen of them. All around the front, along the back, and there are nine represented by the X's proposed to be. Removed. I'll discuss the minor change to the site plan that we may make in a little bit to save even more. But I can say unequivocally, when we go back to the drainage briefly, that all the water on site will be collected within that infiltration system. So the, the way we get here, right, to build this site plan, to save the structure, to put all this money into it. Again, is introducing a text amendment into the East Avenue Village District. That would enable these historic incentive preservation developments similar to the three other zones. The language here. Really is a mirror of the language you have in the other zones. In order to encourage the preservation of structures contributing to positive aspects of community character. The commission may allow minimum area or dimensional requirements. Such as yard setback buffer with the recreation area or parking requirements to be reduced or maximum requirement. To be increased such as height residential density or maximum building area, provided that. Lot areas at least thirty thousand square feet. Of course, there is a historic structure on the site that's listed in a local, state or federal registry or inventory. And we're clear about exactly the standards we're looking. To use. We have a historic architect as defined by the Department of Interior. And let me go, I'll come back to that other one in a second. It must be referred to the Historical Commission for reviewing recommendation. And you, as the commission, must determine that the structure in question contributes to community character or possesses a degree of historic significance. To be evidenced by its age, architectural uniqueness or cultural value. And you also must determine that even if building materials are proposed to be substituted and modernized, the method and degree of preservation. Maintains the character, aesthetic and architecture of the existing building. And this will be done by a special permit. So some of the other standards here have to do with height and building coverage. So and residential density, those are basically the three main things. Right now in the East Avenue Village District, you are allowed to have a thirty five foot tall building. Most buildings are allowed to be two and a half story. Hotels are allowed to be three story. We are proposing that that three story and thirty five foot height not be varied. And this regulation says that's the maximum. So the height of a building allowed in the zone does not change by virtue in terms of feet. By virtue of this regulation. But you would get from that, you know, sixty percent third level to a hundred percent third level by way of the third story. And the, the, the choice to limit the height was intentional. Originally, we had a four story building and we chose after initial review with staff. They felt that maybe that was too much for the zone. So we came back down to a third story building, three story building. But when you do that, right, to get the number of units you need to support the financial outlay here. We got to go out. So instead of going up, we go out. And that's where the forty percent building coverage standard is. So there's a trade off. Again, we stay low, but we have to go out a little bit more. But when introducing that increase in building coverage, we at the same time introduce a reduction in the total site impervious coverage. So that we can get to that thirty percent green area requirement, you know, basically no more than seventy percent total coverage. So we can retain thirty percent. We're requesting a density of up to one dwelling unit for every one thousand two hundred fifty square feet of building area. That basically gives us the ability to get from eighteen to thirty six, one, us eighteen to the twenty six we're showing. But we put a cap in the zone of thirty six dwellings. And then any of the other standards similar to some of your other regulations, you can vary by as much as twenty five percent. The other critical thing that we're adding by text amendment. Is workforce housing requirements. Right now in the East Avenue Village District, there are no workforce housing requirements. And basically because there's not a lot of big projects, but. We're included a text amendment in our application to add the East Avenue Village District to the workforce housing regulation. So when you have more than twenty units, which we do. You must abide by those standards. The result is three workforce housing units that will be created. As a result of this project, should you choose to approve it. Two of those will be located in the manor house in the historic structure. One will be located in the, in the new addition. So we look to both your zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development for guidance. When you propose a text amendment. So the first couple of paragraphs in blue are taken right from the East Avenue Village District zoning regulations. The provisions of this zone are intended to preserve and enhance the character of the East Avenue Village District. By encouraging the preservation of sites and buildings of unique historical and architectural value. And assuring that new structures and uses will be in keeping with the established character of the site, thereby strengthening the economy of the city. And promoting the education, pleasure and welfare of its people. And in addition, your zoning regulations in the East Avenue Village District say. New construction and substantial rehabilitation of existing structures, including those listed on the Norwalk Historic Resources Inventory. Shall be harmoniously related to their surroundings. And shall be consistent with the Connecticut Historical Commission Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation as applicable. That's why we have a historic architect. That's why we visited with the Historical Commission. That's why you have a design review. So going to your plan of conservation and development, we find several goals which point to what we're proposing to do here. Right in chapter six, which is preserving and promoting our historic heritage, arts and cultural historic preservation. We have goal number one, Norwalk protects its most important historic resources. And encourages adaptive reuse of historic sites, encourages to maintain and enrich the city's character. And under that, there's preserve the integrity and character of historic structures, historic landscapes and cultural sites within the city of Norwalk. And develop a plan to establish policies, practices and criteria for preservations of buildings and sites important to the history of Norwalk. And very importantly, it says revise zoning and development regulations to promote preservation. And adaptive reuse of historic structures. There can't be a more direct goal of plan of conservation and development related to this application than that one. There's also guidance in the P O C D. Relating to expanding workforce housing options, which we are doing. And that we should continue to support housing policies. That provide housing for Norwalk's households across a range of preferences and all household incomes. So. We believe this text amendment clearly is consistent with your P O C D, which. You don't have to buy, you don't have to believe me, you can believe your own planning commission, which. Concluded that finding as well after our presentation to them last week. Now with that thirty thousand square foot lot area threshold. There are five other sites within the East Avenue Village District that could theoretically, or four other sites, five, when including us. That theoretically could take advantage of this regulation. So we need to consider those. Those five sites are us at Wall Street Manor. The First Congregational Church, which is our direct neighbor, not imagining any development plans there anytime soon. Saint Paul's up on the north side of the green. The Norwalk Inn just invested significantly in Norwalk Inn. They have a historic structure right here in blue. And then the other side, maybe similar to ours, is the Collins Funeral Home located right here and maybe a sensitive infill development there wouldn't be such a bad thing. So those are the other properties that could take advantage of this regulation should it become a part of your standards. In order to evaluate both the impact of our ten additional units. On the roadway system and the potential. For these other sites to utilize the regulation, we had a traffic engineer look at. A few study intersections and prepare an analysis and I'll have Emily Foster address you now summarizing their findings.
Okay, yes. So we completed two separate traffic impact studies. The first to evaluate. The additional ten residential units that are proposed on three East Wall Street. And then the second to analyze and evaluate if there's any traffic related implications to the text amendment change. Should all five of the properties build to their maximum residential development potential. So as shown in that figure, we studied four intersections for both studies. And in summary, we found that the, with the proposed addition of the ten residential units at the three East Wall Street site. No changes to the intersection operations are anticipated. Also, the intersections are anticipated to maintain the same overall level of service as background conditions. And the same outcomes came with the second traffic study that looked at if all five. Sites were to develop to their maximum residential development potential. So there also were no changes to the intersection operations. And all study intersections are anticipated to maintain the same overall level of service.
Thank you very much, Emily. So we've been busy since we saw you for the initial presentation. As I mentioned, we visited with the Norwalk Historical Commission. They documented their approval on a March third correspondence in your file. We visit with the Harvard Management Commission. They documented. Their finding of consistency and correspondence dated March fifteenth. The Norwalk Planning Commission documented their finding of consistency with the plan of conservation and development in correspondence on March eleventh. Uh and the D E P uh noted their finding of consistency and correspondence dated March fifteenth. Uh additionally, we have positive referral sign-offs from the Department of Public Works, from the Fire Marshal, from the Department of uh Traffic, Mobility, and Parking, having reviewed Emily's reports. Uh the Normal Water Pollution Control Authority on sewers has endorsed the application, as has uh Ever Source and First District Water provided will serve um letters. We also have a letter of support from First Congregational Church, which is our immediate butter on the north and west sides of our parcel. Uh this letter of support is dated January twenty-ninth. Um but while we're talking about neighbors, I do want to talk about um comments received from Mr. Lesko, who is the resident and business owner um on the east side of the site uh in the Raymond Funeral Home here. Um since he is our butter, uh we take uh uh his comments uh seriously. He has an email that was dated, I think, today that we received. Um and he has some very specific uh comments and questions related to our site plan that I wanted to go through. Um one, he brings up concerns about the potential for asbestos and lead abatement and negative impacts related there, too. We have already consulted, project has consulted with a hygienist who has already tested the buildings in question um and is preparing a plan of best practices for uh the demolition and rehabilitation. Uh these things are uh heavily um regulated and 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 following these standards is um something that is very critical, and pike in construction has significant experience in doing so. Um either encapsulate lead paint, or in this case, it'll uh in in the demolition section will be completely removed. But it's not a situation where there's any sanding or dust or situation like that, it's actually removed in with the demolition. So we we uh are very aware of it, and we have a hygienist on the project. Um Mr. Lesko mentions that currently the site uh drains onto his property. And this is true, uh under existing conditions, I'm sure that Mr. Lesko observes rainwater flowing across the easterly property boundary. Um that is because uh right now, the parking lots on our site slope uh from west to east towards uh Five East Wall Street. Uh we do have uh uh drains on site that collect water, but there is some that gets past those drains. Um but I can uh say without a doubt that when we are done, that will no longer occur. There will be no water runoff from our property from Three East Wall Street on to Five East Wall Street, there'll be a curb six inches high around the entire perimeter. Uh there will be one, two, three, four drains added that are all tributary to this um significant infiltration system, which um basically winds back the clock on stormwater management here and retrofits all of this impervious coverage um to current water quality standards. Um Mr. Lesko, Lesko mentioned that the proposed dumpster location was very close to his uh uh facility. Um we took that very seriously, and I actually have uh an updated plan to indicate, to show you tonight. And we can um handle this in a couple of ways, either I can email this to staff right now to put it in the record, or you can simply have a couple of simple conditions um in any approval consideration. But um by making some modifications to the position of the parking on the east side of the site, uh we were able to move the trash enclosure twenty-six feet to the north, so it is not immediately adjacent to his building anymore. Um and that actually enabled us to save two more of the trees in this side yard. So all of the deciduous trees directly off the west side of uh his building will be preserved. So we took that comment very seriously, and we revised the site plan where we could. He notes concerns about um the rooftop deck. Um as you well know, there is recreation area requirement in your regulations that we provide one hundred and fifty square feet of uh usable recreation area for each dwelling unit. Um and the means by which we do that is that rooftop terrace. Um so this is a terrace that is compliant with your regulations. I'll also note that the building uh is positioned um well away from this easterly property boundary. This is the required zoning setback here in this dark dashed line, uh we're about double that distance uh with the proposed building. So we're set back more than we need to be, and we're complying with the zoning regulations on recreation area requirements. Uh Mr. Lesko uh mentioned uh parking and concerns about adequacy of parking, as I stated, and as was stated in our traffic and parking reports. Uh we meet your requirement of one point three parking spaces per dwelling unit. Uh we are not asking for a waiver of that, even though the incentive standards technically would um give us the ability to. Um uh there is a fence around uh the property that he uh says he wants a fence and would prefer it being six feet tall and prefer it being white. Uh as indicated on our landscape plan, the proposed fence is white, it is opaque, and it is listed from five to six feet tall. Uh he makes a a reference to landscaping, um suggesting e- every mature tree will be cut down and and saplings planted. Um as I noted, there's about twenty-three uh mature trees on site. Um and with this modification care of his concerns about the trash location, we're actually able to to uh protect sixteen of them uh during construction and are only proposing to remove seven of them. Um and and some of the seven that we're removing are are uh, let me see if I got those here, yeah, I do. Are are distant from uh his his site, one, two, three, four, uh five, six, and then there will be uh this one here removed, seven. Um so we, see how we're doing here. Catch up with myself, and then and um lastly, he has uh an opinion as to the appearance of the rear building. Um but I will let uh our architect's explanation to you stand uh as to how it was designed and how it looks. Um and uh and of course, we have the Historic uh Commission's approval on it. And have responded to comments from your consultant design reviewer. Um so at the end of the day, uh which is where we are. Let me go back to. Sorry, wanna end with a pretty picture. Uh ultimately, uh we believe this is with consistent with actions you've taken in the past. Uh consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development uh creates uh zoning and development regulations to promote preservation and adaptive reuse of historic structures. Um and the zoning commission will be helping to preserve the integrity and character of historic structures and historic landscapes and cultural resources within the city of Norwalk by approval of these applications. Um that is the sum of my presentation, our team, of course, is here to answer any questions that you have, or you're free to go to the public.
Mr. Flaherty, uh two quick uh questions, I see that uh you you had a sign-off uh today. Um does that mean that um you now have the necessary sign-off from traffic?
That is correct, there are, uh they have accepted, uh they had issued comments, I think, on Thursday or Friday. Uh we followed up with our response uh on uh Monday, and I think Monday or Tuesday, and then uh they signed off on those response comments, they were comfortable with uh the traffic report.
And uh you have the full C A C uh sign-off as well?
We got them all.
Thank you. Uh questions from the commissioners at this point?
Yes, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Um the drawing that you showed with the planter boxes, what what is it that they're screening? I I didn't quite get that.
Yeah, the planter boxes right now are screening the garage, so uh let me show you here.
Is it open?
Uh you, they're they're trellises, so uh I'll share my screen and and show you what that looks like. So this this big gray uh area on the right side where my hand is, is the entrance into the garage, so that is open, there are no doors proposed. Similarly, the exit to the garage, which is the spray area over here, uh is open with no doors proposed. Um but the area in between has a trellis uh system uh that that uh the applicant's gonna build and install. And in front of that trellis system, uh they're also gonna build and install a series of planter boxes.
So none of those are doors, those are basically open?
Yeah, the the only door is the pedestrian door right here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions at the moment from uh commission members? All right, if not, uh we'll we'll turn it over to uh the public uh for uh comment. Uh Brian, you want to explain how this works for the public?
Sure, so anyone from the public, uh if you'd like to speak on this application, you can use the raise your hand feature. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you could hit star nine, and that will raise your hand. You get the raise your hand feature to be at the bottom of your screen if you're hovering over everybody's faces. John, let's go, I'll bring him over.
Thank you, good evening, uh zoning commission, I'd like to thank you first of all for your dedication to the city of Norwalk. And I find myself in an unusual position, I'm usually not on the other side of the uh public hearings uh making comments. Uh as I do serve on the planning commission, I did recuse myself at the last meeting, as would be required. If you've received my letter, um I sent it today, I apologize for the uh hasty uh wording of the uh of the letter. I did meet with Mr. Gaglio uh this past week uh on Monday, the fifteenth, and we did go over uh quite a few of my concerns, and I see that his attorney has addressed a lot of them. Um one of the things that I did um question, and it was actually for the first time, I was being told that uh my funeral home uh has had an agreement with the property owners next door previous, and then with Mr. Gaglio to have an egress from my property. Um it's been a little over fifty years that this has been an established agreement. And since uh Mr. Gaglio's company bought it, we've been paying for that um luxury of exiting. Uh this past summer, uh while things were a little bit slow with COVID, I took the opportunity to uh repave and to put in new drainage uh and new landscaping uh at the funeral home here, which I'm very proud of. Um I really wish I would have known that the project was going to eliminate my exit. My entrance is now going to have to serve as an entrance and exit. And where I did widen as much as I could next to the building, up in front and by the curb cut, um it kind of bottlenecked down. Um Mr. Gaglio did say that he hoped that we can remain neighborly and certainly uh wishes me the very best um with my endeavors. Um but it certainly would have been more neighborly, uh had I had the opportunity to widen the property, the entrance uh at the time when I had uh Frank Puro here doing the paving. Um I do feel a little bit harmed in the sense that I'm gonna have to go back, I'm gonna have to also uh repave, re-landscape, and I'm gonna have to uh put an application in for a curb cut to widen my entrance. I know that's really not his concern, this is my property. Um but the last-minute notification, that being on Monday, that the exit is disappearing um certainly um didn't feel as though it was a neighborly gesture. I know he has worked out conditions with um the butter on the other side, the church. Um and um I certainly endorse the project of restoring the manor house. Uh and certainly understand that it takes putting more apartments on there to um support the ability to do such a project. I do question the number of apartments that are going in um and the um proximity of the new building to the manor house. I don't think, am I, am I on screen? Can you see me?
No, we can't.
Okay, all right, very well, so I'm sitting in my office right now, my office overlooks the manor house. And in all real, in all re- um reality, as I look out the window, once the project is complete, um it'll pretty much eclipse any sunsets that we're gonna have here. No, again, that's not my problem, um or that's not Mr. Gaglio's problem. Um however, uh do that, the size of the project um is overwhelming for the this particular area and community. Um and a little bit more breathing room between the buildings and perhaps a few less apartments in order to establish that um would be a better way of approaching it. Um he did tell me that he had run his numbers, and that I don't know his numbers, and he's right, I don't know his numbers. I wouldn't begin to um guess at what it would take to restore a manor. Um I do know that my funeral facility is um was established in eighteen uh seventy-three uh and is actually the oldest funeral home here in Norwalk. Uh I was in town hall the other day filing death certificates, and I noticed the plaque in the front foyer that names my funeral home as uh over a hundred years of establishment here in the city of Norwalk, and I'm really proud of that. I've invested everything I have in purchasing this, uh and although I'm not yet the property owner, I have a set date. And I have a a set price for which I will buying, I will be buying the property. I'm a little worried that the project next door is going to hurt my property value um when it comes time for my purchasing. Uh I'm concerned about the construction, uh people come to me to um to grieve and to celebrate um their loved one's life in a quiet environment. Uh and I understand that most of my wakes are at night, and that's fine, but I do have funerals during the day, at which time construction will be in full bloom, and there will be quite a bit of noise. I'm worried that when people come in to make arrangements, that when they park in my parking lot and look at the construction and hear the construction, they may change their mind as to whether they should stay here or go on. And again, I know that's, you know, not Mr. Gaglio's concern or problem, but it is my concern or problem. I've invested everything I have to be a business owner here. Uh my son has changed careers and gone back to school and became a funeral director and is my partner here. And we wish to continue to be the oldest funeral facility here in Norwalk. The um the fact that there is lead and asbestos in the carriage house, maybe in the manor, um is concerning, and I know that it may be encapsulated, and the lead is in the paint. Um but ten feet away from where this project is being demolished, the carriage house is a daycare. And if you look at the property, the entire building running along the back of um the Three East Wall Street property is a daycare, and it is utilized every day. The kids are out in the playground on the other side of Three East Wall Street. And right next to that playground is the elder care housing, again, seniors there in a daycare capacity. Um I am quite concerned about the particles, and depending on the direction of the wind that particular day, particles may escape and may affect myself, the elder house, or these children. Traffic is a huge concern, uh when I see the traffic study, I certainly understand there was a great deal of time put into that, but I live here. I know what it's like to get out of my driveway, out of Mr. Gaglio's driveway, Three East Wall Street. It is difficult, and when my exit closes, it's going to bring more of my traffic out of my main driveway, which is gonna bring it closer to the traffic light at East Avenue. There is going to be a traffic concern, there's already excessive speed for vehicles. excessive speed for vehicles coming up the hill. I truly believe the bicycle lane, I talked to, you know, Mr. Gaglio about this too, which is not his concern, but it really is. The bicycle lane is wrong. I've never seen a bicycle in that lane. They all take a sidewalk because it's worth their life if they try to use the bike lane. If they try to use my side and in three swell street side, there's parking. There's fifteen minute parking in front of my building and there is paid parking in front of three East Wall Street. That's about all there is for parking. One point three parking spaces per unit. Understood, that's the zoning regulation, but I live here. These are my neighbors. I live in a second floor apartment here of my funeral home. And everybody next door are my neighbors. I help them when their batteries dead. I help them when they have a flat tire. I am neighborly. I'm always neighborly. But I also know and I've gotten to know the people that rent next door. And I know that they're younger people. They're just starting out or they're divorced people that are waiting for their settlement. They're in the one bedroom apartments typically are two or three people and dogs now that live in these one bedroom apartments. One, actually two of the apartments. There are three people living in one bedroom apartments. There's three cars per unit. And one of the units, they have three cars, a motorcycle, and during the summer, they bring a boat in to store for summer. Sometimes I let them use my parking lot if there's not enough on three East Wall Streets. Parking is a huge issue. It really is. And I know the regulation is the regulation, but I would implore you to please consider that it's not just gonna be one in a third car. There's gonna be a need for more parking someplace. And I really don't know where it's going to be. Again, I am not against the project. I'm against the size of the project. And certainly restoring a historic building is a great idea. Elmcrest turned out beautiful. However, if you take a ten foot step off to the left of what picture they show you, you take a look at the huge apartment building that's next to it. Now, that may work better than this because there's actually a driveway that goes in and it flows around to the back and an exit driveway. This is only going to have one exit which may need to be widened as well. Just a consideration. Again, I certainly am in favor of saving trees. The saplings are gonna take years to develop in order to shelter and to make the project look like it's it's a part of the neighborhood. I mourn the loss of my exit, but I understand that is not mine tomorrow. I would like to see the fence constructed prior to the construction beginning so that at least I have some sort of a shelter for my people coming for and going for weights to not have to look at the project and the dirt and the mess. You know, I, I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration to Mr. Gaglio and and everyone involved in the project. I do wanna be a good neighbor. I respect you. And I hope that all of this can work out in an amicable way where we can all live here in a beautiful community, in a very beautiful community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, Brian?
Uh, yeah, Brad Craighead, I'll bring him over.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, good. Great. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners and those interested in this development project. Just give me a few minutes to run through this and I thought it might.
If you could just say your address too for us for the record.
Sure. Well, actually I have five properties in the area. Two Park Street, which is one, but John Lesko's property, so I'm on the other side of three East Wall Street that has five apartments. Eight Lewis Street, which is on the other side of the First Congregational Church that has five apartments. I actually bought that from the First Congregational Church. Eighty-five East Avenue, which is across the street on the other side, which has six units. Eighty-seven East Avenue, which has six units, and then most recently ninety-six East Avenue, which is two doors down from the Collins Funeral Home that has eight units recently approved. I thought it might make sense for me to make a few comments before I delve into the letter that I wrote on March ninth and sent to both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission. My name is Brad Craighead and I'm a small scale developer of historic properties in the East Avenue Village District. I'm currently working on my seventh historic building in Norwalk, which is located just a couple hundred yards away. My business is buying neglected buildings and converting them to distinctive high-end rental apartments, which I then manage and rent out as landlord. I'm fully invested in the neighborhood like Mr. Lesko and my business model tells me to make decisions that strike a delicate balance and ensure the benefit that they benefit the community because our long-term interests are aligned. I'm also on the board of the Human Services Council, which is two buildings away. It's just an example of my commitment to the community. In this regard, I put a tremendous amount of effort into working with others and I started the Norwalk Green Association to represent all of the large property owners around the Norwalk Green to help build community and raise awareness around walkability and pedestrian safety. In regard to the proposed three East Wall Street proposal, I'm a bit baffled as to the list of the other thirty thousand square foot lot properties that are referenced as eligible for this zoning amendment. As mentioned, they include the First Congregational Church, St. Paul's, the Norwalk Inn and Collins Funeral Home in addition to this project. My view, these aren't comparable because it's highly unlikely that any would be developed into large-scale residential apartment complexes. And this application seems to me to be a one-off exception to zoning density within this neighborhood. I would therefore suggest that the commission consider a proxy list with thresholds of greater than equal to twenty thousand square feet in order to include several other relevant historic buildings in the East Avenue Village District. Research would reveal that even at twenty thousand square feet, the list of eligible parcels is very short because only a few have legitimate historic structures because most were developed long ago into substantial commercial enterprises. And incidentally, I own just one property that would qualify for a twenty thousand square foot threshold. As mentioned previously, I'm converting that to just eight apartments. Even at twenty-five thousand square feet, there's only one other building that would realistically qualify for this exemption and that's John Lesko's building, which is a funeral home, not an abandoned or a building in disrepair. In my view, one of the most appealing aspects of the area is the sense of open space and low density. This is reinforced by the neighborhood's iconic New England architecture, which is predominantly red brick or white clappard. With the exception of a few unfortunate developments completed long ago, existing zoning regs have been very successful in limiting density and there's consistent scale. Existing regulations set the density at twenty percent, which I know is economically very challenging. Therefore, I agree that qualified historic preservation development should warrant some kind of expansion under this arbitrary cap. However, I believe that a thirty to thirty-five percent density cap would be more appropriate for this proposal, not forty percent. It's just too much. In order to limit the the number of dwelling units to something between twenty-two and twenty-four distributed across the historic structure and the substantial addition, that would, that's what about feels right to me. I think we can all agree that the preservation of open space benefits the character of the community. And therefore, I, I believe that the existing recreational space requirement should apply and ought to include some minimum standard of outdoor area that immediately surrounds the structure and not permit developments that meet these thresholds exclusively through balcony or rooftop type alternatives. With the assumption that this proposal will be approved at or close to its present form, in my view, it's critical that the commissioners consider the consequences of contributing additional housing density to the Norwalk Green neighborhood. While in principle, I'm supportive of the development, I don't believe that its scale is consistent with any other property in the area. And there are measures that should be taken to ensure better pedestrian safety and mobility in the neighborhood. And these should be considered alongside this proposal. At last count, there were over one thousand full-time residents living within a five-minute walk from the green. And this project clearly adds to the activity in the area and more specifically to people walking, biking and driving on East Avenue, Park Street and East Wall Street. Until this presentation, I hadn't even considered that the other four reference properties would ever be developed into another twenty or twenty-five or thirty apartments. But if that did happen, that just tells you how much more we need crosswalks and lights going across East Avenue and to access the green. I just need about another minute. In addition to the one thousand full-time residents that live within five minutes walking distance to the green, there are three churches, one synagogue, one hotel, two funeral homes, two child daycare centers, one elderly convalescent center, three nonprofit organizations, including Mill Hill. Talk about open space across the street. And a dozen or so large commercial off office buildings. Most of the people live in the hundred and seventy-five single-family homes, but a growing number reside in the ten to fifteen multifamily or mixed-use properties. And and several, probably a hundred and fifty or more live in the two large apartment buildings which are head of the, head of the Harbor and Park Tower condominiums. That's a lot of density in the middle of the city. But just to make note, there is no pedestrian pan, plan whatsoever. Therefore, the three East Wall Street proposal should be reviewed within the context of the overall East Avenue corridor. And in my view, this is an opportunity to consider undertaking a traffic safety plan with additional crosswalks on East Avenue and around the green. If this neighborhood is truly the gateway to Wall Street, we need the city of Norwalk to literally pave the way for people to get there using their own two feet safely. While we need to address the area's pedestrian safety issues, let's also please reflect and consider the fact that the proposed text amendment only serves to protect and preserve one historic building. It probably couldn't be torn down anyways. Norwalk needs a comprehensive plan that includes other historic properties in the East Avenue Village District, and this excludes every other one. I therefore ask that the commission, please take the time to consider the future of this iconic neighborhood and its few remaining historic properties. The Norwalk Green Historic District is absolutely one of Norwalk's treasures. Let's preserve it together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Craighead.
And then for anybody else who'd like to speak on this application, you can use the raise your hand feature or hit star nine on your phone. Hand one up if E N A, if you, if you meant to put your hand down, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Brian. Sorry about that technical issues and I'm, I'm sorry. Actually, this is I am C C. I'm logged in under the Neighborhood Association account, but it should be under my name. I apologize. I'm speaking as a private resident. Brian, I also wanted to defer if there's other butters or anyone in the Norwalk Green Association that wants to speak. I'll wait until folks closer.
No, it was just you, Dan.
Good to go?
Yeah.
Thank you. So first of all, I just really want to echo everything that Mr. Craighead just said regarding the status of this particular parcel and the designation of this parcel. Seemingly, I hesitate to use the word spot zoning, but I'm tending to get the this feeling of that given the possibility of this designation actually applying to any other parcel in the area. So I would say that that is concerning at the very least. And all of the other concerns that he shared as well, I would also echo. And I also sympathize with Mr. Lesko in terms of the impact that it would have on him, not just from his residence there, but clearly on his business. But I did, I had some questions. I hope that the commissioners will address or have the applicant answer that it wasn't clear on when I was watching this application. So the number of units with twenty-six units being there in a significant amount of cars, i- is there going to be a left turn exit restriction coming out of there now? Given the number of residents that would be in that building? Because I think most folks who live in this area know that the cars queue at the light up at East Wall and East Avenue. And that can go well down, down below the the historic commission there all the way down the hill. So I can't imagine cars coming out of there and taking a left and creating a, a safety hazard on East Wall trying to cross over. And especially if they're going to take a right onto East Avenue, they'd actually have to cross two lanes of traffic. You get into that far right lane. I think that would be something to consider. That's my first question with the left turn exit restriction. And I wondered with, when I was looking at some of the drawings you have with the access that comes in from the church property. So is there an agreement with the church that that would, the, the property coming out that goes out to ultimately comes out onto Park Street? Is there an agreement that that would be used by the residents of of three East Wall Street? And I also wonder if there is any agreement for what the construction equipment would be? Is that coming onto the property and off of the property on East Wall? Or do you have a temporary agreement to come in from Park onto, onto Lewis? And then I have a question. I couldn't follow what you were talking about with the large tree when you were talking about the view of the structure behind the main house. First of all, I do want to say that the, the main house rendition really looked beautiful. And I, I think it would be, the structure itself would be a great improvement there. But the renditions that you showed with the view to the structure behind it, the tree that you're referencing there, I'm not sure what type of tree it is, but it seemed to me that five to six months out of the year, there's probably little or no foliage. So you'd have a pretty straight shot at seeing back to that, you know, long vertical similar to when we had on East Avenue. I think we were calling it a motel-like structure, which definitely would not be attractive coming from the, coming from the East Avenue area, certainly looking out from from Mill Park there as well. So I just wanted to make those observations and also echo what Mr. Lesko and Mr. Craighead said. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
If anyone else look, is looking to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool or dial star nine. I think that's it.
Okay. Then we'll go back to Mr. Flaherty with a response to questions or issues that were raised.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So I'll try to take them kind of in order as they were heard. The again, this is our site with the red arrow. This is the funeral home next door where Mr. Lesko lives and is the purveyor. Currently, yes, this is a one-way entrance on the east side of his building and currently, yes, they exit through the site. That's been a private agreement between parties. It's a revocable agreement and correctly will be revoked when construction starts. Unfortunately, again, I think that's a private agreement between parties. Mr. Lesko does note that he has a remedy in terms of the improvement of his own driveway to satisfy access to his property. The, in terms of construction activity, of course, the city has noise ordinance. And to jump on one of the other comments, there is no agreement with the church or any other abutting property owner to have any varied access out in any other direction, either temporarily or in a permanent condition. All of our access, both for construction and the permanent site, is going to come through the existing driveway. The, and there will be no left-turn restriction leaving the driveway. That really only impacts people backing up into the site, doesn't back up anything in the street. And there are plenty of times when there's not a lot of traffic that that operation can be made safely. I understand that this queue from East Ave can extend. So residents will learn what's best for them, depending on the time of the day. The, I think I've adequately addressed the concerns on lead and asbestos. We're following all appropriate standards and guidance of our hygienist. We, of course, received approval from traffic, mobility, and parking. And our findings were that there is no change to level of service, either with our 10 additional units or with any use of the proposed text amendment. Also note on parking, yes, we're compliant with your standard of 1.3 per unit. But we had our traffic engineer also look at typical I T rates for this type of development. And that indicated anywhere between 20 and 32 spaces were required, whereas your regulations require 34, and we're providing 34. As far as putting the fence up first at the property boundary, the applicant is willing to put up a temporary fence with a nice screen on it at the start of construction, but doesn't want to put up the permanent fence until construction is at a point where it won't likely be damaged. But he is very happy to accelerate the installation of that fence so that as soon as he feels that construction won't damage it, it will be installed. I think on this question of eligibility of this site or adding additional sites, we did look at, let me just get to it here. We did look at other properties that might be eligible if you dropped the lot area threshold lower than 30,000 square feet. I'll zoom in on this a little bit because I'm sure you can't read it. But there are, I think, 11 or 12 other properties.
You can't see it, Craig. We're still seeing the aerial.
Oh, okay. So that's right. I have to stop and start again when I go to a different document. Thank you, Brian. We did provide this list to staff after receiving Mr. Craighead's letter. There are 11 or 12 other properties that would be eligible if that lot area threshold was dropped to 20,000 square feet. Again, you know, you'd have to look at the particulars of each property to see if that was eligible by regulation or eligible by practicality. In, in general, we have no, we have no objection to lowering the lot area standard, except that we really, at this point, can't do it as a part of this application. The application has been noticed. The planning commission has provided their referral comments based on a certain standard. So you'd really have to start over if you expanded the applicability of the text amendment at this point. But certainly, the city of Norwalk, the zoning commission, or another property owner applicant or developer could propose to you that the standard ought to be lower. And you could consider the merits of that request at a future application. We would be supportive of that. The gagglios would be absolutely supportive of that. I think quite frankly, that that request is almost an endorsement of the text amendment in that the request is that it be more applicable to save more historic structures. As far as the coverage standard, unfortunately, it is what it is. We came in again initially with a 35% coverage with a four-story building. But we felt, again, after consultations, that restricting the height and mass, restricting the mass through height was more important than by restricting it through coverage. This really is the minimum needed to make everything you see proposed here happen. With the subsidized workforce housing units, with the significant and thorough restoration of the front building, with the fact that we have to get rid of five units to add the 15, this is a very tight financial gambit to really even do what you're seeing here. So any reduction of that coverage would probably stop the project. It's really on a very thin margin at this point. But as far as open space, we agree. We had actually looked at open space within the district. I guess I'll share this for a sec. As I mentioned during my presentation, we're limiting our hardscape coverage to 70%, which requires us to have 30% open space, which is not otherwise required in the regulations today. So we agree there needs to be ground-level open space around buildings. This particular exhibit that I am displaying now is an analysis of other properties within the East Avenue Village District that have more than 70% hardscape coverage today. So it is, it is common in the East Avenue Village District by evidence of these yellow highlights of properties that have a lot of hardscape coverage and a restricted amount of open space. So we think our commitment to saving now 16 trees on site and preserving at least 30% of the site as open space recognizes that part of the value of what people love about this area and this district. We should also say that this use is going to be added as a special permit standard in your regulations. So all of the special permit provisions will be retained. And you have a thorough requirement. You saw the list of sign-offs we needed to go get and people we needed to visit, public hearing requirement. And it works efficiently. And the public process works well. You saw that we made revisions to our plan tonight as a result of the public process. And those controls you will have with these historic incentive developments. So we think they can be done properly. We think that if the regulations were to be abused, they would be caught in this thorough regulatory process that Norwalk has and will be created with this regulation. Yes, the large tree, the large trees in the front are deciduous trees. Let me just show that. One moment to find the right exhibit. These six trees, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and now 6, we're saving are deciduous trees. So yes, their leaves will fall off in the winter. And the view might look something in between this and this. But I guess we would suggest, contrary to other opinions, that this isn't such a bad view either. But it's only a narrow view for a small period of time as you're looking down the driveway. But I don't think there's anything wrong with this view if that was more like the view in the winter. You know, the term spot zoning was thrown out. Of course, this is not considered spot zoning. First of all, it's not a zoning map change. It's a zoning amendment change. It's a critical differentiation. And also, we've identified several other properties that theoretically could be eligible. So although I understand that people might use that term differently, from a legal perspective, it's not spot zoning. So you shouldn't be concerned about making your decision tonight. And, you know, of course, the gagglios want Mr. Lesko to be successful. We want his business to be successful. And we do want both neighbors to live in harmony together. And I think they can. I've known the gagglios for many years, and they're stand-up folks. They're honest, and if they tell you something, they mean it. So the only remaining comment I had in my notes, you can ask your own questions if I missed one, was relative to larger envisioned plans by traffic, mobility, and parking to do a better job of addressing pedestrian mobility within the district. We wholeheartedly support that. That's not for this 10-unit project to take on. But it absolutely makes sense. I do know that there are two new individuals heading up the Department of Public Works in the city of Norwalk. They come from the city of Stanford, where I've worked with them. And if any individuals are going to focus on pedestrians and pedestrian safety, it's these two. So I would imagine, just by their past work in Stanford and their reputation, that you will see them take on pedestrian safety projects in the future. The, I think that's what I had to say. Anthony, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Craig. I'd just like to add, I have a tremendous amount of respect for John Lesko and Mr. Broadhead about, or Craighead about their properties. They do a wonderful job, and they take great pride in their properties. And I do also. This is not, this is a legacy property for my family. I'll be visiting Mr. Lesko before this property ever gets sold to someone else. So my son is on the line also. This is something that we do. We build to last, and we build to hold. So we are as much prideful as they are in their properties, and we truly want to be good neighbors. It was our meeting with John on the property the other day on a frigid cold day. We talked about the fence. We talked about the access. And the license we granted the previous owner with Nick Cognetta, they were bottlenecked in their property, and they have a way to fix it. We talked about that earlier. But I can no longer keep the traffic coming from the funeral home through my property. And the times when they have a very busy funeral, the people park on our piece, it makes it very cumbersome for our tenants. But I think we've addressed all that. I think we've looked at the drainage that he had brought to my attention the other day. I think we had looked at the parking well within the regulation. You and I've talked, Craig, that, you know, if we did not want to ask for a waiver on the parking because it's important to keep your tenants happy because they, you know, everybody has a car for every apartment we have. This is a good project. It's the only way we know from doing hundreds of historical rehabs throughout the state of Connecticut, from Norwich to Greenwich, to save this building. It's literally falling apart around itself. The only thing holding it together you said before was the paint. And I know of no other way to finance the restoration that's involved in that manor house. So this is our plan. We think we put everything on the table, everything we could afford, including the workforce housing. That was something that we suggested, and no one asked us to do. But it's important to us. We build affordable housing throughout the state, and it's something my son and I believe in. So we want to give everybody a chance. We want to build a beautiful project, and we're going to keep it for the rest of my life. I can guarantee you that.
Thank you. Happy to entertain. Any further questions?
Any questions from commission members regarding the project? Okay, I don't see any, then we will close this public hearing.
Lou, I did, I didn't want to just pull up, said for the public here, we do want to have the planning commission recommendation and the CAM referral.
Public hearing, that's, that's fine. Pull it up if necessary. Galen can read it.
So this is the letter from D P. So the overall found that the proposal generally consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. And if everyone's had a chance, I can move on to the planning commission recommendation.
Okay, why don't you do that? Steve, does this need to be read into the meeting, or is displaying it sufficient?
It belts and suspenders. If we want, we can read it in. That's fine.
Okay. Galen, do you mind?
I'd be glad to, but it's hard to see.
Okay, there you go.
Ah, that's much better. Okay, at the March 10, 2021 meeting, the planning commission made the following decision. Be it resolved by the Norwalk Planning Commission that the zoning commission referral number 2021-04-R/SP/CAM Three East Wall Street Associates, Three East Wall Street, Proposed Building Zone Regulation Text Amendment to allow historic preservation development in the East Avenue Village District by special permit be approved. Be it further resolved that the reason for these actions are to implement the plan of conservation and development. One, to achieve the plan of conservation and development goal for Norwalk to expand workforce housing options, including conducting a citywide housing study and reviewing the existing workforce housing regulations to allow more employees to live in Norwalk and avoid costly commutes from distant locations. Chapter 3, Property and Opportunity, in PRIN. And two, to achieve the plan of conservation and development goal that, quote, "Norwalk has a neighborhood and housing strategy that maintains a variety of neighborhood types and housing traces through a variety of mechanisms," end quote. PRIN, Chapter 3, Prosperity and Opportunity, end PRIN, colon, and a dramatic reading. And to achieve the plan of conservation and development for Norwalk, quote, "to provoke diverse housing types such as townhouses, commas, live-work units, rental apartments in Norwalk, in Norwalk's urban core, at transit-oriented locations, and in mixed-use clusters on major corridors, in village districts when appropriate and through redevelopment." PRIN, Chapter 4, colon, Housing Choice and Healthy Lifestyles, end PRIN, semicolon, and four, to achieve the plan of conservation and development goal for Norwalk to, quote, "Norwalk protects its most important historic resources and encourages adaptive reuse of historic sites to maintain and enrich the city's character," end quote. PRIN, Chapter 6, colon, Preserving and Promoting Our Historic Heritage, comma, Arts and Culture, end PRIN, semicolon, and be it further resolved that the notice of the action be forwarded to the Norwalk Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Galen.
And then just for the record, too, the Harbor Management Commission did find consistent with the Harbor Management Plan. That doesn't need to be read on the record.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing and move on with our agenda. I'd ask that all the folks involved in this application, if you would, please stop your video. You're welcome to stay online. Thank you. All right, item four, review and action on pending applications. A, action on item 3A, which is 2021-04-R/SP/CAM, Three East Wall Street Associates.
And so for this one, you'll probably make two separate actions?
Yes, the first one, the first one will be on the text amendment. And then the second will be on the special permit, the CAM application. And then the second will be on the special permit, the CAM application. Is there a motion on the, would you? Brian, put up the proposed text amendment, please. And is there a motion on that text amendment?
Is this for both pieces of the text amendment?
Yes.
This is the workforce housing and okay.
And Brian, for some of us, can you make that a little larger? Thank you. We've had
Very similar to the planning commission.
So move.
Okay. Michael has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Galen has seconded it. Is there any discussion?
I would like to discuss.
Please go ahead, Richard.
Like last time I was torn listening to what was being proposed and my mind was kind of made up after listening to Mr. Craighead of Mr. Craighead? Or Broadhead, I'm sorry.
Craighead.
Craighead. I feel like having worked in historic buildings before, including the one I'm living in, that I understand the incredible amount of money that it takes to restore and what you need to have for income to justify that. And I feel like in listening to the application that it is too intense for the neighborhood. And that could be resolved by eliminating the affordable housing units. We have a project right down the street, as I recall, that's going to have many affordable units on Wall Street. And I don't see where the addition of three one bedroom workforce units is going to make any difference to anybody except the developer. So because I think the idea is a good idea. But I think it should be reduced to the 25,000 square feet that was talked about, and I think that the requirement for affordable units should be eliminated. I'm going to vote no.
Richard, when you talk about eliminating the affordable units, am I correct in assuming that you're not just talking about eliminating the language? You're actually talking about reducing this project by three units?
Yes.
Okay.
Or two units. I haven't really thought that part of it through because I don't know what difference that would make in the coverage, so to speak. But that was my thought, yes.
Okay, so for workforce housing, once you hit 20 units, that's when you're required to provide 10% of your units as being workforce. So
That was just, this was a special change for this historic district.
It would be adding, one of the proposed changes is adding East Avenue Village District to the applicability of the entire section of workforce housing. So once it's over 20 units proposed, that's when they would provide the 10%.
So under this text amendment.
Right, so really what Richard is suggesting is a change in the text amendment to eliminate the requirement for workforce housing. The issue of limiting or eliminating some of the units, it seems to me is a separate issue and doesn't fall under the text amendment.
Well, it would have to do with the other part that I had suggested that the density be lowered and the but pretty much in line with what Mr. Craig had, I'd say frankly, that the density be lowered from 40% to 35%. And if the, based on what I've heard from other developers, if the requirement for affordable or workforce housing was eliminated, it would make a difference in the cash flow as such that fewer units would be required. You know, that could be gratuitous, what I've been told, but that is what I've been told.
Well, maybe rather than simply stating that you're going to vote against it, why don't you make a motion to change the language and let's see if there's support for that.
Let's vote first on the first one and then if it fails, vote on the second one. You know, having, then we'll have two motions on the floor. Will we, if he makes a new motion?
I don't know which frankly, Galen, I'm not certain which makes more sense, whether we should see if the commission is interested in altering it or whether we should vote on one and then vote on the second one. Steve, any advice here?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just reading through the amendments as you guys were talking. I don't know that, my first thought is I don't know that eliminating the workforce units would actually lower the amount they're requesting. I mean, I think you could, you'd have to then go back into the special permit application and modify their approval by three units. I don't.
Well, I agree with you. I think that's, I think that's how you'd have to deal with it. I don't think the elimination of the, of three units belongs in the amendment.
Yeah, I didn't mean it that way. What I, what I, what I meant was that if the issue of historic preservation is for a return on the investment, then eliminating a requirement for workforce or affordable housing in a historic preservation application might allow this to be a viable financial investment if only 35% lot coverage were allowed as opposed to 40. I'm not talking about number of units, although it probably would work out that way.
Personally, I don't think we even know how much is being made on a workhouse workforce unit and how much is is versus how much money would be, you know, that's a whole fiduciary calculation that's not before us. We have no information on.
So you know, one of the things, Galen, that I have always stressed over a little bit, especially when I read Nancy on Norwalk is, you know, how much life experience and professional experience I'm allowed to have when I'm listening to these applications. And, you know, one of the things I do know, having represented a number of property owners and participants in some rather substantial projects is that when an offer is made to buy a piece of property, there is $0 paid for the workforce and affordable housing units. So if it's X amount of dollars per unit and there's 100 units allowed, then 10 or 20, 10% is discounted right off the top. So I am assuming that if somebody does not have to build workforce housing units, then that property is more valuable because there's a better return. That's, that's all.
All right, hearing the conversation, I would defer to the suggestion that Galen made. Let's vote on the motion before us and then if Richard wants to make a amendation to that after we've acted, that's fine. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second, any further discussion? All right, if not, then Steve, can we do a roll call on this?
Sure, and this would be voting in favor of the motion.
That's right, voting, voting in favor of text, the text, the text amendment.
Okay, Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
No.
Mr. Goldstein? I'm sorry, Josh couldn't hear you.
We still can't hear you. Okay.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
So that motion carries, Richard?
I've got nothing, brother.
Okay. All right, then let's, let's move on to the second part, which is motion on the special permit. I believe we have that. Thank you, Brian.
The one, the one change from what you guys saw was just based on the revised engineered drawings that Craig showed during his presentation.
That, what is that movement of the garbage receptacle?
Yep, garbage receptacle and then I think that's it.
Right.
One question I had. I'm sorry, Lou, go ahead.
Before we make a motion, I would suggest that we simply add to this that the if we approve it, that the developer put up a temporary construction fence at least six foot tall on the border with the adjoining property.
Opaque.
Five, five East Wall Street. So can I have a motion to approve that with the added language?
Can I ask a question first, Lou?
Sure.
Or we can, there's more question to Steve. The one point that did seem to come up that sort of resonated was the concept of the pedestrian plan. I know it's not necessarily particular to this project, but just more as a broader thing. Is there just something that we could signal to, I don't even know who in the city bike is responsible for that, needs to, that's something that is of importance. As there's more of these or more of these projects are coming up.
Yeah, so as Brad's a big advocate, as you can tell, for pedestrian connectivity, especially in this area. And as, as, as Craig had mentioned, that we do have a new director for transportation, mobility and parking. He's been here all of three weeks. So he's just getting his feet wet. He does know about, you know, the, this intersection in this area and the concerns that we have. So I, he's, he's a very big advocate for walking and sidewalks and mobility. So I was in a meeting with him today. When I talk to him next, I will make sure that this area is on his radar. He does know about this intersection because I took a little tour with him a couple of weeks ago. So I'll definitely bring that up to him.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. Again, is there a motion either to approve or disapprove the special permit language?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Galen, move.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask one thing first before the motion?
Sure.
Can we add and constantly maintain to the construction fence language you put in?
Oh, you mean, sure, let's see. Along the eastern property, yeah, and maintain.
Through construction.
Throughout the duration of that. Thank you, Richard. That's a good addition. All right, now could I have a second?
Second.
Michael seconds, let's do a roll call on the revised motion.
Let me just figure out this first before.
That's, that's fine. We can wait.
He has to stop the screen share so I can.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
That one was unanimous.
Okay, project is approved. Next item is B 2021 dash oh six X SPR, G and P Norwalk LLC 93 Winfield Street. This is site plan review. I know we deferred action at our last meeting on this because we didn't have language in the meeting notification that would have permitted us to take action. Is the language that is here now sufficient for us to act on this?
Yes, it does. Yeah, it gives you the ability to make an action based on the, the, excuse me, the resolution that was forwarded over, I believe was sent Monday.
Okay. Can you throw up that resolution for us, please?
I have it up.
I'm gonna show you can't see the screen. There we go.
Okay. All right, you want to move it for us? Thank you. All right, we had a rather full discussion of this at the last meeting, but I'm fully open to further discussion, but before we go to discussion, can I have a motion either to approve or disapprove the motion?
I move to approve.
All right, Richard moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Michael seconds. Discussion, conversation, questions?
Is the applicant required to put up like some type of construction fence during construction?
Good question. I didn't see it in the motion.
Where are you thinking of a fence, Michael?
I guess with that neighbor that where the trees are going to be taken down on that side.
I think in the I think that encompasses in item three, the installation the soil and erosion controls, insulation. But I don't believe that they
Can I amend my motion to approve by saying that that we add a requirement that there be screening in the between that would be the west neighbor, I believe. Once the trees are taken down, that the screening fence be put up during construction.
And Chairman Scholman, if I can interject. The applicant has no objection to putting in a screening fence on that, that back property line during the period of construction. Similarly, we'd offered that we would be willing to put up eight to nine foot tall arborvitae, which is not in the landscape plan. We had called for smaller arborvitae. We remain willing to put those up. And we have submitted a photometric plan that was not present at your last meeting.
All right. Let's then include, include those, those two anyway, in the resolution. Screening fence and the taller arborvitae, which, which we had discussed at our last meeting.
Okay.
And anyway, in any case, would you put that back up so that I can ask for? Or did I get a motion?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion.
And second.
Okay, is there any further discussion of, of this? All right, if not, then we'll, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Rod, you are muted.
I'm sorry, I abstained since I missed the meeting last where this was discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Mr. Showman?
Yes.
I think if my math is correct, that is one, two, three, four, five, six in favor and one abstention.
Okay, that is sufficient to approve it. All right.
So Chairman, I just want to say one thing. Thank you very much for the UN, the zoning commissioners, and I think it will be one of the very good projects in East Norwalk. I thank you so much.
We look forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Ten dash eighteen S P slash fifteen dash eighteen CAM BPC Capital Management V LLC eighty seven East Avenue. Excuse me, request for bond release for completed six unit multifamily dwelling. Steve or Brian?
Or Michelle.
Hey, or Michelle. And this, this is usually just pro forma is.
Yeah, I could pull up a quick resolution for you. So this is in regards to release of erosion and sedimentation control bond. So the project's been CO'd, so no longer need those.
Okay, I think we can do this by voice vote. Motion to approve?
I moved. I.
Okay, any discussion?
Nope.
All right, if not, all those in favor, just raise your hands and everybody, everybody's hand went up. Okay. Next, four dash twelve S P Windover Farm Partners. Now, this is a project we heard about quite a long time ago. I'm not even certain that everybody was on the commission when we approved this. But it's also, it's a request for two bond releases for completed nine unit conservation development. We have language on this as well, Brian?
Yep, so this is for two separate bonds. One was again, a erosion control bond. And the other was for a fence. Property has been CO'd.
Yeah, for those who, who don't recall this project, this is right near the Wilton Town Line. It was a, as I recall, it was a very dark fence that was being put up as part of this development. And I get they have now met the requirements. Let's handle this the same way. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, Josh moves. There a second?
Second.
A second from Richard. All those in favor, again, just raise your hands. To unanimous. Okay. Next, review. This is five review and action on new applications. Twenty twenty one dash oh eight MV Christopher Feeder thirty two Woodward Avenue Replacement Motor Vehicle Repair and Sales License. My understanding is that Mr. Feeder is buying this operation from, if I remember correctly, from his grandfather. Brian or Michelle?
I think Chris is here if he wants to maybe make a comment or anything, or else I can, it's a pretty straightforward, just change of ownership. I have a resolution to put up unless you'd like to hear from Chris.
Anybody feel it's necessary for Mr. Feeder to speak? I don't see anybody saying yes, so.
All right, I'll bring it up.
Michelle, did you say that this is a grandson buying from grandfather?
From my understanding, yes. Theodore, I think it got passed on to his mother, but if he wants to clarify, I think he can do so, but.
I just was curious. Mr. Feeder always ran a pretty nice ship, so I guess his grandson will probably do the same.
All right, motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, Richard moves second.
Second.
Josh seconds. Again, show of hands, all those in favor? All hands are up. It's approved.
Real quick, I just want to just say thank you, guys. While the screen share was up, I couldn't find the mute button.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah, just real quick, my, my grandfather actually passed away back in 2015. And the idea is just to get it from my grandmother to a younger generation to move the whole ball forward. And I appreciate you guys considering it. Michelle has been fantastic, leading me through the process of being in compliance with everything you guys request. Again, she has been a godsend on my side and helping me through the process. So thank you, guys, and I appreciate the approval.
Thank you.
Mark.
Yeah, best of luck.
All right, let's move on to discussion and recommendation on the revised workforce housing regulations. We've actually had those in front of us for some time. Steve, you want to pick up on that?
Sure. I'll pull it up. You need me to zoom in more? Can you see the screen? How's that?
That's perfect.
Legible? Okay, so I'll give you the very, like, first very, like, the treetops view of things. The, so if you're in, well, I'll give you a little bit of background, I guess, first. This is something as Chairman had mentioned, we talked about looking at this a while ago. There, the workforce housing regulations don't apply universally across the city. And this came up during the rezoning of South Norwalk and also West Avenue, Wall Street corridor. How that, that might, from an equity point of view, might not be fair. The, the housing officer had at the time recommended us, recommended to us that we consider, you know, making it the same throughout the city. Why, why should, why should South Norwalk or parts of West at Wall Street be looking at one standard for affordability and percentage versus other areas of the city? When we redid the South Norwalk TOD regulations, we looked at different levels of affordability and different, different percentages. The old, what's now called SSDD zone, which was really right at the train station, had a 20% affordability requirement at 80% of the state median income. And, but there were very few properties affected by that. So when the proposal got expanded out and the geography of the SSDD area was expanded, we, we looked at 20%. We did an analysis, actually had a firm that was hired by the redevelopment agency, RKG Associates, who's working in the city right now, is a really good firm, does really good work on the numbers end. They analyzed, you know, some of the typical projects we see, which would be like roughly, you know, a couple hundred unit development with some ground floor commercial. And they ran the numbers and the 20% affordability requirement wouldn't pencil out on the development side. It just was, it was too much of a take from the, from the market end. So we ran some other analysis and we looked at, well, if we don't do 20% affordability, what if we just lowered the affordability requirement? So we came up with the curve formula, which provides two options. One is you can provide the 10% affordable units at 60% SMI, or you can stick to the 80% SMI. But if you do that, you also have to provide a fee to the city of 1% of the residential construction value. And that money goes to a fund that's targeted towards a lower affordability levels, which the zoning regulations don't address. So we, we put those changes in and I think that they've been, they work pretty well. So if you're one of those developers that works in South Norwalk or the West Ave, Wall Street corridor, the changes we're proposing, or at least I'm advocating for, they wouldn't affect any of the projects you're working on. So that there's not a big change there. The, the project we talked about tonight, it, it would have an impact on, though the applicant, as part of the tech change you just approved, recommended that the, the East Avenue Village District area be included as part of the workforce housing program. So what's being proposed is that the workforce housing regulations apply to all multifamily developments throughout the city, regardless of what zone you're in. So you're, you're not, there's not a different standard in the business one zone and the business two zone versus the, the South Norwalk area or East Norwalk. It's all the same standard throughout the city. So that's kind of the gist of it. And the one I'd say significant change, well, I'd say two significant changes, we've dropped it down to 10 units or more. And we've also, if you're, if you're under 10 units, you have the option of, and there's one little change I want to talk about tonight because there was somebody asking about the regulation. So I put in a change based on the conversation I had with that person, which is on the screen right now, which is number two. So our.
Steve, you have the, you have the historic preservation document up?
I do? Oh, all right, not on my screen. All right, that was interesting. Sorry about that.
Don't worry, it was fine until you started got, started quoting things. I was like, I don't know where we are anymore.
Let me try that again. All right, here we go. I had it up on my screen. How's that? Is that better? Okay, so I was speaking to the wrong document in the right, I was in the, as my, one of my professors in college said, you're in the right church with the wrong pew. So, so the, I say that the most significant change would be to item number two. So if our multifamily is defined at three units or more. So if you're putting in a project from three to nine units, you have the option of either adding, making one of those units, I should say, or designating one of those units as a workforce unit, or you can pay, pay the fee. So that, that, that kind of makes it, you know, fair for everybody across the board. Another change that's in this section is to, i- if you're, this came up on one of the other projects, if you have, if you have a development already and it does not have workforce housing as part of it, but you're adding workforce units, the workforce units would apply only to the new construction. So you're not retroactively going back and having to apply that to the whole project. So that that's another change. And, and I think part of the rationale for, for, at least in my mind, for advocating for this in general is that there, you know, there's, there's a very well documented need for affordable housing. I, I think it would be difficult to go beyond 10% or a higher percentage of the number of units within a development. But I think that if we spread it out so that everybody's on the same playing field and have it so that if you're adding this kind of housing, you're, you're, you're adding to the, you know, the workforce need that we have. So that's why I would advocate for that. I'm hoping what was proposed makes sense and is a little more streamlined from what we're, what we've been dealing with and the language is a little more straightforward. So, but I'm happy to take any questions or go back over anything that might have been confusing at the beginning.
Steve, I think this is really good. I, I think that we should do this. My question though is, is if the developer wants, if we have the power through the regulations, if developers are incentivized to, if they want to increase their workforce housing. So I know that there was a question about economic viability projects at beyond 10%. But if a developer wants to do 20% workforce housing, are there mechanisms we can use, you know, and I realize I don't know if this is something that's something the common council needs to do versus us, but something we can do to incentivize developers to satisfy that need. I don't know what policy tools are available. I just haven't done the research on this. But I didn't know if there's something we can do in addition to what you have proposed.
So I'll pull up. I think you have the right screen now. This is the existing workforce housing regulations.
That's right.
So there is already on the books a bonus provision in there. I, to be honest with you, I haven't looked at this very closely in, in terms of thinking about ways to change it. But since this regulation's been on the books, no one has ever taken advantage of this. And that, that goes back to the adoption of the workforce housing regulation itself. So that's something else we could take a look at. To me, I wanted to, I, I was going to break it into two parts. The first part was, you know, for what I just went through. And if you wanted to look at this more closely, we could take a look at this. Or as part of the broader zoning regulations rewrite, we could maybe tackle it then. Maybe the consultants had some different ideas about that.
Yeah, and, and I, and I think that the fact that the bonus provision, I didn't, I didn't, you know, full disclosure, didn't know about the bonus provision. But the fact that I didn't know about it and the fact that no one's using it does speak to that we probably need to revisit it. So I think any of those avenues are something I'm absolutely open to, but I'm glad that we're talking about this here.
Steve, I think. Oh, no, go ahead, Richard.
I'm sorry, if I can interject at this point. This is exactly what I was talking about with that historic application that we just listened to. Having rehabbed an 1850s house and owned that 96 East Avenue building when it was a apartment building to start with, I know the staggering amounts of money that are put into restoring, if they're going to do what they say they're going to do, restoring, restoring a building like that. And, you know, to Josh's point about the, and Steve's point about the bonus that you get for the additional affordable units, the reason you haven't seen any, at least as far as I know from talking to developers, is, is that it's not worth it. So from a consulting standpoint, you know, I, I think it's a great idea to spread this out over the city. I always thought it was unfair that it was just in South Norwalk. But I think that that historic preservation should be exempted from that, but that super sailed, I understand. So I've said what I'm going to say.
I, I think you're. I was going to just say, just quickly to Dick's point, I think Dick's absolutely right that obviously the developers don't think it's viable, otherwise someone would have done it. So I think that when we look at this, I think that we need to have those kind of conversations with community stakeholders and developers to figure out a way to achieve policy goals, but also make it worth it.
Well, before I got on, I think it was before I got on the zoning commission, I did attend those hearings when the 20% versus 10% was discussed. And it's the first time that I've seen the principles of FD Rich and Spinnaker and, and the rest of them. All there in force, talking about it. And it was interesting to have, to hear those conversations. And, you know, maybe we should think about doing that again because as I said before, I think spreading it out over the city is, is a great idea.
Yeah, two, just two quick points, and it's picking up just on what you were saying, Dick. When that hearing took place on those regulation changes, we actually heard from some folks advocating for affordable housing that, and, and this may have changed because this is a few years ago, and I know that economies change. But some, we heard testimony that they, it was not so much the number of units as the actual affordability of those units themselves. And we've heard that from business owners too, when they talk about, you know, And we've heard that from business owners too, when they talk about, you know. Some large businesses up on Merit Seven where their, you know, their back office staff has to drive forty five minutes. You know, to get to work because they can't afford to live in Norwalk. So they end up maybe shifting jobs. Up the line where they have their back office in a different place. That's, that's one point, um, to it.
When you look at the, the numbers that are involved in these affordable units. They're not cheap.
And the other point that I, it really might come up to the second text amendment that I wanted to talk to you about was. I think I, I have, and, and this was brought up by, uh, Mr. Craighead. I have no opposition to lowering that square footage or the, or making the eligibility. Broader pool of the historic buildings. The, the approach that I mean, that I typically advocate for is. Kind of taking things sometimes in baby steps to make sure that the regulation we're advocating or proposing. Doesn't have unintended consequences. So I think if you look at the Elmcrest building, you know. That, that's a little different. Maybe we could tweak that back design a little bit better or, or make that. You know, something a little bit different going forward, but. I, if we can add density to some of these historic buildings to offset the cost of. The preservation and the affordable units, then I think to me, I'm all in favor of that.
Steve, I, 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 I agree with, uh, almost everything I've heard here that, uh. This is long overdue and, uh, that it makes a lot of sense. My only concern, and you alluded to it. Is, uh, again, you know, we're, we're, we are shortly going to be embarking on a rewrite. Uh, of, uh, the entire zoning regulations. And, um, here we are yet again. Suggesting ahead of that. That, uh, we make significant changes. I, uh, would prefer to defer it. And, uh, address it as part of, uh, the rewrite of the regulations. I think. Change ahead of, of, uh, right, but I think probably we should have. Held up on, um, and done as part of the rewrite. Again, I have no argument with this. I think this is. Terrific and we ought to be moving it, moving it forward. But I think we ought to move it forward as part of that process.
Lou, can I ask a question on that? Why? I guess I, I hear what you're saying, but it seems like what this is doing is, is bringing the policy. In line across all the districts versus really adding anything and nothing's really preventing us from when the. Rewrite occurs to changing the policy yet again. It just seems like what we're doing is taking a step to. Provide equity in the policy and just. Make us, you know, what I think is an extremely common sense and, and really great step forward. That there's almost, I don't see any downside, like what, sort of a no regrets. Where we're not taking, we're doing something that you'd be doing, you should be doing, like you were saying, it probably should have been done a while ago, so. Uh, I don't see, I see the hesitation or understand why we may want to if it's something's more divergent. But it seems like what we're really doing is just converging on a, a standard policy across the books, which I think is. Which makes a lot of sense. And then Steve, my only question on top of that is the, the fund. Who has oversight over that and what, how does that work?
So that, those funds would have to go through an approval process through council, um. And I, one of the things I meant to do for today, which I forgot to do, was get the tally of the funds collected to date. Um, I can, I can get you that information before we meet again. But that would, you know, that I think. Ideally, you know, in, in a perfect scenario, like you would have an affordable housing developer. And or even the housing authority themselves who would use this funds. For, you know, maybe for property acquisition purposes or for to help them with soft costs on. Developing plans, you know, because they have to go through the same costs with engineering and architecture as anybody else does.
It seems great. I would just love, I don't know if we want to put anything in of. Oversight over that, but it'd be curious of like transparency to how those funds are being allocated to and spent to see if they're actually going to meeting the goals that. We're intending for them to meet. And I don't know if that needs to be part of the amendment in any which way. But. I'm extremely in favor of this, so. Thank you for putting this together.
Again, Nick, what if, uh, we were to address that? In, uh, the new zoning regs? In other words, uh, as part of the, uh, uh, change in the regulations, build in a role. For the zoning commission, possibly even the planning commission. Uh, in determining, um, uh, where those funds are going to be going.
Yeah, and that could, that makes sense, and maybe we do a two-step. I'm not saying necessarily adding it right here. But I wouldn't, I would personally would not delay voting on the changes ahead of us. In case anything, any new projects start to come up between now and whenever we get around to passing a rewrite, which I could imagine could take. A significant amount of time.
That's why I think it's important. Go now.
I agree.
Worst case scenario is that we have, um, set the tone for the rewrite, but. You know, uh, that ninety-three, uh, Winfield Street was a perfect example about what happens when. You have a good idea and you just sit on it waiting for something else to happen. I'm not saying that that project isn't gonna come out okay. I don't wanna start any trouble, but. That was something that slipped in. So. I would be in favor of, of this and then we can tweak it in the, in the second.
Is that the general feeling here that? You wanna move this forward?
Yes, I agree.
Uh, well, then that means, uh, what, Steve? We move it toward a public hearing?
Correct. We'll have to refer it out, um, with the same process, so it'll be on probably in it. Your second April agenda if we get everything, you know, lined up.
Alright, well, I'm not going to stand in, uh, in, 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 in the way of everybody else. Let's.
I, I do that.
Let's. Let's start moving it forward.
Good. I think it's important for us to emphasize the real need for affordable housing. So I'm very glad to see it go forward.
Yep, and I think time is of the essence. I think the sooner the better.
Alright, then let's move on, uh, historic preservation development.
Okay, let's, let's gamble here and see if I get the right.
This time you did.
Alright, so, speaking of new amendments, and so I'm, I'm sorry if. I'm looking, I got a couple of screens at work here, so I'm looking backwards at my other screen. So this was actually right in line with what we were just talking about with the east, um, east Wall Street proposal. And this is something, uh, actually Craig Flaherty had mentioned to me a couple of weeks ago. And I said, yeah, it's a good idea and it wasn't really on my plate until. There was another project coming up where I thought maybe this would help get that project over the finish line. So you, you may see that in a couple of months, but. It, it, in essence, what it's doing, th- this amendment would do would be to define something like you just approved. As, as what we're calling historic preservation development, which is, you know, nothing unique in that. And then. Where it gets added, it's, so basically it's already allowed, you just approved it in the East Avenue Village District. It's allowed in the D residence zone. Very similar language is in the, um, CBD and the SSDD. So what this would do would be to replace those where it's listed in those zones and. List this as an allowed use and then within each zone have the specific. Criteria and provisions related to that kind of development in the, in the zone. Because as you saw with the East Avenue Village District. There, you know, there might be differences in lot sizes. There might be differences in, you know, what you can give for percent setbacks or whatever, because. Each one of those zones has different criteria and allowances for building height for, um, FAR et cetera. Ideally, as we think about this more, we, we try to like make that the language as similar as possible between the zones so that. You know, the, the allowance or exceedance that somebody is. Uh, permissible is, is about the same. So you're not, you know, varying it and tweaking it on a project by project basis. So I think that would be one thing, maybe we would. Need to tighten up over time, but. So in the, I'm just gonna take you through the, the SSDD language as it sits now. So this is, um, basically we would add historic preservation development. And then list the, and this is similar language to what you just approved. As part of the East Wall Street application. Providing the same criteria, we have to go to the historic commission, have to have a, has historic preservation architect look at it. And what it does is it really, it replaces the language that's already there. So you're already allowing that by special permit in the zone. So it just, it actually, in this instance, it actually tightens it up a little bit more from what you're seeing now. So that, that's kind of in a nutshell, so I wanted to.
Steve tightens it up in what way?
Um, so the. The SSDD language doesn't have this twenty-five percent. Max request. Also, it doesn't require, um, the historic architect or the historic commission review. And so this is the existing language. I'm sorry, it's got the big strike throughs through, but it, as I said, it doesn't have the twenty-five percent. Or the other reviews that are required, but it does allow them to ask for basically the same thing. And he actually asked for even more than what you could do under the new regulation. So if, if you think this is something, I, and I know picking up on the chairman's comments about going forward with things that. You know, before we do the rewrite, to me, this is very similar in that it's already something you're allowing. It's just. I think, in my opinion, it is cleaning it up a little bit. And if, if it's something you think is worth pursuing now. I can come back and, and talk about it again at the next meeting and show you the other zones and how that would apply. And, and then we'd have to go through the same process as we did before.
Feelings on this one?
Same as I did about the last one, yeah. I think it's good language. It sets the tone for what's coming.
Right, and if, if, if they wanted, if it ends up changed in the comprehensive rewrite. We can consider that then, but, you know, as Richard says, sets a tone.
I also think it's easier from a policy pers. I was gonna say it also is just easier from a policy perspective. If we set what our policy goals are now, that way when the rewrite happens. They know what they're starting with and there, or it isn't a whole discussion where we're rewriting the wheel every time. That way, if we can, there actually may be a benefit to putting this in policy language. Get, doing the public approval work, having the public, and so that way when we're doing the rewrite. There isn't a whole debate about half the things that are going in or not.
So Steve, when they, uh, repave a road in Norwalk, they give everybody notice in advance and then they don't let you dig it up for two years. Are we gonna have a text, a text amendment banned for two years, I hope?
Well, I would hope by the, when that regulation is rewritten, the, the, the whole regulations are rewritten. We don't see a text amendment for a very, very long time.
Sounds good.
There's always like, you know, when we did the CBD and the SSDD regulations over, there were some, some new concepts that we had never. Gone through or talked about before. And so, you know, like, if you remember that Berkeley Street text amendment, there was. You know, some small tweaks you made along the way, but it doesn't change the general theme and the general plan.
Alright, you wanna start moving this one forward to then?
Yeah, I, if it's okay, I'll put this one on the agenda again next month and I'll show you the whole list and give you a little broader feel, just so you're comfortable with it again.
Okay. Alright, discussion of proposed, uh, housing bills. Just to give you a little bit of, uh, background, Steve can give you more. There are, um, a lot. Of, uh, housing bills. Uh, up in the legislature, uh, some of which will, uh, if, if approved would take away. Uh, powers that we currently have. Others, um. That, um. Frankly, at least in my view, just don't make sense. And many of these are being pushed, uh, by, um. Uh, the larger urban areas, I think, uh, disproportionate number of them are coming out of, uh, New Haven. Many of you have probably heard, uh, about an organization called Desegregate, uh, Connecticut. And, uh, yeah, obviously there. Some communities, particularly smaller, wealthier communities, have very strong. Uh, feelings about anyone interfering with, um.
Their right to keep people out of their towns, right?
Exact, ex, I wasn't gonna put it quite that way, but yeah.
The reality.
So, uh, it seems to me, and, um, actually Nick has been, uh, asking about this. Uh, that at the very least, we need to educate ourselves about what's going on. Uh, see whether there is a role for us to play, determine if we wanna play some role in this. And so we need education. And, uh, I've suggested to Steve that perhaps we bring. Uh, someone into our next meeting to begin that process. And I think, uh, Steve had, uh, in our conversation, we had discussed having the, uh, director of Westcog. One of the advantages of having him is the area he represents. Represents all of the options, the bigger cities, Norwalk, uh, Stamford, uh, Bridgeport. Danbury, a- as well as, uh, you know, Westport, Wilton, Weston, New Canaan. And, uh, um, some, some of, uh, the, uh. Smaller working class cities. So, uh, it seems to me he probably has good perspective, uh, on this.
One thing, Bridgeport is not in Westcog.
You're, you're, you're absolutely right.
So it's the only big cities.
Stanford, Norwalk and Danbury.
Yeah. He moved the, the headquarters from Stanford to Sandy Hook.
Yeah, which is.
Which indicates a sort of small town orientation, but he's a really smart guy.
And I think that, uh, perhaps, uh, if, if, um. Steve, I don't know how you feel about this. If we were to have at the same time. Uh, our, uh, own redevelopment agency director and or you. In on this, uh, conversation with us. I think we'd be well served.
Yeah, I, I did send him an email asking him about availability to come talk to a meeting I haven't heard yet, but I'll send him another email and I'll copy you on that and maybe.
Okay.
That'll spur it along a little bit.
Good. Everybody comfortable with that? I mean, well. It may well be that, 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 um. A bill or bills will get passed, uh, if, even before, um, we can get a speaker here. See, I'm just not certain what our role ought, ought to be, whether. We're the ones that ought to be advocating for something or against something. Uh, or whether it ought to be, uh, you know, the first elected official, the mayor.
Other person, person we could ta- talk to are, are, is Stephanie Thomas and, uh. Lucy Dayton and Bob Duff, who are there every day and probably have a pretty good grasp of what is. Likely to pass and what's not likely to pass.
I also note that, um, the public hearing for SB ten twenty-four was earlier this week. That's the big desegregate Connecticut bill.
Right.
And I'm pretty sure a number of the speakers were planning and zoning directors, members of zoning commissions. I mean, I, I, I don't think that it's out of the realm. If we want to weigh in. You know, a- as a big city in Connecticut, it may be worth exploring. I think our voice is important.
Just to add a couple of notes, um, I did exchange some emails with Stephanie about some concerns that I had. And had some offline conversations with some other individuals. I mean, the bills still have to go through, you know, those were, it was just the committee, the committee level at this point, so they do have to go out to the broader. Broader delegation. So I think. One, I, I'm a little bit of a wait and see approach on what actually shakes out of that before going too far, um. going too far. Um, I did have, um, staff look at a couple of the bills, and we looked at ten twenty-four pretty closely, and Brian paid attention to the hearings as well. Some of them, well, I think a lot of them have merit to some of, some of the points. A couple of things were really troublesome, and Lou alluded to some of the things, like some of the oversight from, you know, beyond the local commission level in terms of developing ordinances and regulations, what you should follow and adopt and guide, design guidelines, which I really thought was a really broad overreach on their part. Another one that concerned me was um, that within a half mile of all your transit stations, you have to have, um, fifty percent has to be multi, you know, two, at least minimum of two units. That's, that, that works great for us in South Norwalk and works fine in East Norwalk. Um, it's a, you know, Row 8 and look, they have to, they're on, they, they have to do something to address things there, but if you think about what we've been talking about up at North Seven, where, you know, maybe there's this kind of like mini TOD right at the train station. If you extend that half mile out, you're on the other side of the seven connector. And so it's not like you want people walking from the other side of seven across the, you know, a four-lane highway. So some of the bills could be nuanced, I think, to, to deal with some things, and I, I think it takes a little, I think I'm a little worried they're trying to rush some of this through without really thinking through all the implications.
I think there's a bill that, uh, gives, uh, housing authorities authority to, um, um, develop housing in adjoining communities.
Yeah, that really wouldn't affect us, I think, but I, the smaller
But I don't think, um, New Canaan or Wilton would be particularly happy, uh, about the Norwalk Housing Authority, uh, putting, putting up housing in their communities. I could be wrong. All right, um, so, um, let, let's see if we can get that, uh, uh, set up. If, um, if we can't get him as a, uh, speaker, maybe we'll uh, have to defer to, uh, some of the political leaders in town. Uh, and, uh, here, get some feedback from them.
They would understand what these bills say, you know, because you know, they're spending, that's their main focus is, they understand, so they could at least fill us in on what do they say, what do they think the implications are. That doesn't necessarily mean we'd have to agree with them, but it would be looking to people that presumably represent us who at least have looked at it.
Right. All right, uh, the next item, discussion of outdoor dining. Steve, I think that's yours.
But hold, sorry, I know we said, oh, the Westcog person, I just, I didn't know what, where Galen's comment landed about trying to set something up with some of the local uh, representatives as well. Are we gonna try to actually get them at an upcoming meeting or some sort of conversation with them, or how, how, how has, has that worked in the past in any way?
This, this doesn't have to be a, um, single meeting. Um, we could, we could meet with, uh, uh, the director of Westcog, uh, at our first April meeting. We could have, uh, the politicians here perhaps for our second meeting. Uh, however, if, uh, the director of Westcog is not available, then maybe we bring in the politicians first and meet with them.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just don't know with the politician side, if there's a timeliness to that in the sense of if things start motioning mo- moving faster along, I don't know if people wanna, I don't know, people would be willing to do a special meeting or something like that to uh, get in front of them or get the ability to sort of voice if we have concerns, uh, or ask questions just that we can understand better.
Right.
Because frankly, there's a lot that out there, and I can't really parse a little bit, like what's actually what the, the volume of it all, I mean, when you try to look at this, it's like, you know, it's most of you are lawyers, so you're much more tuned to this language than I am, but it, it is written in legalese and sliding, okay, what, what are we saying here? What, so it'd be great to actually see what's, what's the distilled version of these things and the implications for us.
Right.
To the extent we can.
So outdoor dining, Steve?
Uh, so this one, Lou, um, it's, so the executive order from Governor Lamont for the waiver of all outdoor dining requirements is set to expire on April nineteenth. So, um, Jessica and Economic Development was looking at what the city should do going forward with our zoning regs. Westport just did something where they kind of, um, they had their zoning commission essentially add, um, an amendment to the regulations where they kind of continued uh, the language of the executive order, um, until a time as determined by their zoning commission. Um, so if that's something that you would be, um, interested in, uh, implementing here, because right now, I, I think the process worked out pretty good for us last year on streamlining the, the process for outdoor dining and, um, you know, we didn't charge any fees and we, we were able to really expedite, get all the permits out, you know, in less than a week. Um, so if we wanted to do that going forward, because we, you know, who knows when restaurants will be open a hundred percent and with no social distancing requirements. So I wanted to get your feel on that.
Well, what, what, what if, what if instead of doing it the way Westport did it, we simply extend it until the governor opens up, uh, indoor dining to one hundred percent, uh, without any social distancing. Uh, so that it's sort of self-limiting.
Okay, yeah, and one other consideration is
Do we have to hold a public hearing on this?
Uh, technically, it's a amendment to the regulations, I would think, so I, I would think so.
So we can't do it until the, at least the second meeting in April?
Yeah, so, so by then it won't be, um, you know, too bad because, um, the outdoor dining right now opens up April first now anyway for, for, for our regulations. So, um, from April first to October first, you're allowed to have outdoor dining, um, so this would kind of just be a continuation of that. Should, you know, things get worse and, and it extends beyond October, um, you could still continue your outdoor dining. Um, the only other thing is we, you know, for private property, we've, uh, all parking requirements are waived. So that might be something to look at as restaurants are starting to open up indoors. Um, they may start to need some of their, their parking lots back for cars, so just one more thing to, to consider.
Okay. All right, let's have it on the agenda then for the next meeting. Uh, the industrial zone, uh, the study status report?
Let me do.
I attended the last meeting, um, and um, but I think it's in the same place. We, we're still waiting for interviews with stakeholders and some specific recommendations. I don't know, maybe Steve will agree with that characterization, but
I, I'll send out the link from the meeting was last week, so yeah, that, there, we're, we're looking that the public, um, we're, we're ironing out the details of the public meeting on the, to show the draft recommendations, and that will be at the end of April. I'm trying to finalize the date, which I should have in the next day or so. Um, and then get that out to the public, and then we're probably looking at around, um, June or so, when they should have the, the final recommendations and, you know, final presentation of things. The only thing we might have to think about is, uh, ex- do we extend the moratorium for a couple of months? I gotta, it's gonna be really close in the timeframe of when the moratorium expires before the plan is complete, so we have to, have to think about that a little bit.
Well, it's not just a question of when the plan is complete. Doesn't it go to, uh, the implementation of the plan?
Yeah, yeah, it, it's too early to say, because I don't know what the final recommendations will be in terms of those, but I'm guessing to your point, you're correct that they'll say you shouldn't be having single-family houses allowed in the industrial zones, those kind of things.
Uh, when, when does the moratorium expire?
I think it's in May or it, or maybe June. I can dig it out and I'll figure out what we need to just hold another hearing or what the process is, but I'll have an answer to that.
Okay, sounds good. And, uh, the, um, South Norwalk TOD study, Michael?
Nothing new since what, February the twenty-fifth, the last meeting?
Right.
And I'm assuming they're gonna do another meeting, um, soon.
Okay. Um, Steve, uh, did a link go out to that, uh, report as well? I mean, an awful lot of that were questionnaires that, uh, they asked online.
I'll send both links out in one, one email.
And, uh, just a, a personal question on this. Um, they had these questionnaires and they were showing the immediate responses to the questionnaires. Um, but there was no way of telling how many people were involved. And so I'd like to know how many people attended that meeting, because, you know, if we're talking of just, um, a handful of committee members, uh, you've got to wonder at, uh, the value of those uh, questionnaires, uh, but they were good questions, uh, we just need more people to answer them.
Okay, I'll, I'll find out.
Okay, and, uh, the rewrite, uh, where do we stand with the hiring of our consultants?
Just before the meeting, I got an email saying they are sending the, um, workers' comp document to the city tomorrow morning, and once they have that, the mayor can sign it, so
Okay. All right, uh, approval of the minute of, uh, the March fourth meeting. Um, Josh moves approvals, there are second, Michael seconds, uh, all those in favor, raise your hands. Um, and, and he opposed, any abstentions? Rod is abstaining because he wasn't at the meeting. Steve, any further comments?
Nope, nothing for.
Okay, uh, comments by any of the commissioners?
I just want to say that three East Wall Street looks like a really great project, and I was very excited, um, about it, and the presentation tonight was very thorough, and I think they should all be commented, and I look forward to seeing what it looks like.
I appreciate that. Um, I, I, I also think it's a good project. I would have liked to have seen it, uh, scaled back, but I understand. Uh, you know, that, uh, then the economics, uh, uh, might not have worked.
I'm not gonna say anymore.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second from Galen, uh, all those in favor? I see you all in April. Stay well.